You guys all right? Everybody set?
Yep.
All set?
All set?
Yes.
Mail?
Yep.
Mike?
All right.
Heads in the trans.
Go.
Um, good evening. Can we bring the meeting to order, please? I'm gonna do this first. I wanted to go into the meeting first and then we'll... Mike?
Motion.
Heather? Okay. Will you please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, before we sit down, I'm sorry. I just wanted to have a moment of silence for the people of...
Ukraine.
Ukraine. Thank you. At this point in time, um, we have had our public comments and, uh, thank you. Sorry. A lot of sorts.
Yep.
At this point in time, um, public comments, please, uh, agenda items only. Any topic related to the agenda may be addressed except for personnel or specific student issues. The school board encourages public participation at its meetings to allow for efficiency in conducting meetings and to give each speaker a fair opportunity to present their views. The following shall apply to the public speaking portion of the agenda. Each speaker shall state their name. Any questions, concerns be submitted in writing with the speaker's contact information, name, address, phone number. Each speaker shall be limited to a time, approximately five minutes, which is agreed upon by the board. The board will not permit discussion involving individual personnel or students. Direct all remarks to the chair. Community members may not poll individual board members nor debate other community members in attendance. Once again, members of the community are encouraged to attend and speak during public comments. Undue interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the Board of Education Business will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. While individuals have the right to email us, uh, to write to email with board with questions or concerns at any time, the board will not read emails aloud during the public participation portion of the meeting. Thank you. And now we, uh, do we have anybody who wants to speak during the public comment period? Come up to the mic, please.
I thank the chair for the opportunity to speak and address the board. Um, my name is Kenny Newton and I fully support the, um, proposed capital improvement project for the Highland Central School District. Uh, I am a resident of Highland, taxpayer, a registered voter. I currently have two children in the elementary school. Uh, one child I have is in fifth grade. The other one is in third. I am also a union member of Local 17 in Newburgh and in my 20-year career, I have worked at many school districts around the area upgrading their facilities. I am the president of Highland Bay Ruth League and come here to explain why I support this project. I rise to advocate for the 214 children currently registered in our baseball and softball programs and all those of those kids who are not. A new track and turf field at the Highland High School would not only serve football, soccer, lacrosse, and track field athletes, but every student enrolled in Highland High School. These improved athletic facilities can be used for physical education and would be an improved outdoor classroom. These children would have increased access and ability to participate in exercise and athletic abilities even in poor weather conditions. Gym class is for everyone and for a lot of these kids, this is their only athletic experience. In the last two months, I've engaged with lots of parents excited to get their kids into baseball or softball for the first time. After two years of the pandemic, these kids are limited in their ability to freely socialize, exercise, build and keep friendships, or achieve athletically. I apologize for the shaking. I'll try and keep it under five minutes. The proposed completion of these improvements would coincide with my daughter being in seventh grade and my son in ninth grade. Talk about perfect timing for me, the kids I coach, um, and all the kids in their grades. This project also benefits their parents, family, and friends to enjoy these upgraded facilities. Student, students and all per- school personnel will benefit from the upgrades to air conditioning, ventilation in the libraries and cafeteries of the high school and elementary school. Along with new boiler installations in all three schools, these upgrades will provide increased air quality and to everyone in the buildings. Good ventilation and good air quality should always be a priority for everyone in our district's facilities. These proposed capital improvements include concrete sidewalks that are also paramount to senior citizens, people with disabilities accessing events at the Highland Sports Complex. Improvements in these facilities are also overdue. Restroom facilities, excuse me, are sorely needed for our seniors, ones with disabilities, as well as parents with young children. Concessions are one of our biggest draws at the Highland Bay Ruth Park and all of us would be thrilled to frequent a state-of-the-art concession stand at the high school. You can count of years of support from parents and volunteers from our organization. Uh, members of our organization are regulars at Highland Athletic Fields, whether it is soccer, football, lacrosse, or track and field. We are there to watch our children and our alumni compete. We would all love to see a big new Highland Husky logo on the 50-yard line of a new turf field. Improvements to bleachers at the complex would also be something beneficial to everyone in the community. Our organization has a great relationship with JV baseball coach Rizzo and varsity coach Maginella. Over the years, they've always been there to help us, volunteering their time for our players. Uh, and I look forward to all future efforts to build a bridge to modified baseball and their programs. We are currently working with them on winter clinics and kids get ready for another season of baseball and softball. I also want to thank the district's athletic director, Frank Alfonso, and the facilities director, Pete Miller, and with their help, the kids can use these facilities to achieve our preseason goals. I would also like to see improvements to the current facilities behind the middle school where the JV, uh, where the modified baseball team plays as well as the high school where the JV and varsity team plays. I'm in the process of piloting a six-and-under softball program for girls aged five and six and they, after they complete our T-ball program. An improved softball field at the elementary school would impact our organization directly. We are to use the softball field to practice and play games during the spring. I plan to work with the elementary physical education teacher and varsity softball coach, Mrs. Canosa, to collaborate and coach girls who want to play softball on this improved field from kindergarten to the end of sixth grade. That fight, that field might be the first softball field those girls see in kindergarten and the, and the last they see when they, um, they leave middle school after playing modified softball. I don't want to leave out the boys and girls. And teachers in the elementary school would also benefit from installation of a ramp from the softball field to playground. Installation of fencing around the playground and the east side of the athletic field is also important to divine boundaries for our young children. Highland Bay Ruth encourages kids to become well-rounded athletes and young adults. We take great pride in laying the foundation for these kids to be successful, not just in sports, but for life. We also look forward to watching and supporting these kids in all their future endeavors. Improvements to school district inside and out are investing in their future academically and athletically. Two of the recent leaders of the PAC winners are thriving athletes in our baseball program. That is just a small sample of outstanding young student athletes we coach from year to year. I'd like to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of Highland Youth Football Director, Kevin McKenna, and Youth Cheer Director, Michelle Doyle. Their program's dedication to the kids, parents, team spirit, and developing family atmosphere is truly impressive. Their philosophy of mentoring children to not be just better athletes, but better people in the community is so important to this town's future. Administrators, teachers, and coaches will benefit from their efforts the minute those kids walk into seventh grade. Kids will walk away from our organizations onto brand-new and improved upgrades to classrooms and athletic fields on a path to success. Highland Bay Ruth and Highland Youth Football and Cheer will provide the seventh grade with all the athletes and a loyal fan base ready to go. I ask that everyone join me in supporting this capital improvement project. Let's give the kids and our Husky family something to be proud of. Thank you, Kenneth Newton, President of Highland Bay Ruth League.
Thank you.
Need to submit? Newton, but I'll put mine.
Anybody else for a public comment?
Hello, Kevin Rizzo, to Highland Avenue, Highland, New York. President Miller, Vice President, Ms. Gilmore, board. I'd like to speak as well on behalf of the capital project as well. But before I do that, I'd like to thank the board for all the support that you've given us as coaches over the past three years. Um, a quick story and I promise I'll keep it under five minutes. Um, right before COVID, I had a impromptu meeting with Mr. Barone in a fire truck. Um, and he shared a dream or a vision that he had for high school athletics, middle school athletics, and Highland in general. And I realized that I also share that same dream. And over the past three years, I committed myself along with the rest of my fellow coaches to really building these programs and putting forth dedication and commitment and watching our students grow and our athletes grow and our athletes start to achieve on the field. One of the things that the administrative team has asked us as teachers is to think about what makes Highland the place to come and work. And I've reflected on this many times the past year and I've realized that there is something that separates us from other communities. And that's as a Highland resident, I identify with my Highland Central School District. I identify as a blue and gold Husky. And that is why I, I come to work with pride and I do whatever I possibly can due to that devotion that I identify as the school district. And I know I share that, that, that same philosophy with many of my family and my friends in this community and my, my neighbors. And I'm asking that as we go forward with this project, that you consider the, the improvements that could be placed onto the turf field, potentially the, the press box, the bleachers, the concession stands, and thinking about the, the ability for us to build our athletes, to shape their bodies into what they need to be to compete, to allow us to strength train, uh, train, and to continue to build the character that we're trying to build out of these young athletes. It's been a tremendous honor and privilege to work for you for the past 15 years. I, I, from the bottom of my heart, I say it is an absolute joy and I'm so thankful for everything that we've, we've accomplished over the past few years and I look forward to continuing to move forward with progress and continue to, to, to feel that sense of pride that I have. It's with Adam. I just deeply thank you all for what you've done so far and the project's not done. We're all heading in the right direction, so let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just wanted to, Kevin, we are so fortunate to have you as a teacher.
Thomas Schlapik, I am a physical education teacher and a coach. I probably taught most of your kids or coached most of your kids. I do also want to thank you for all you've done going forward with respect to athletics. Speaking as a teacher-coach, what I ask my kids on the field as student athletes is to give 110% to be their best, to go all in, to have no regrets in anything they do. And that's what I'm asking the board to do as we go forward, is to go all in on this project. Include the turf field, include all the amenities that, let's shoot for the moon. I believe that the Highland community will rally behind any type of proposal that you put forward. I truly am amazed by the Highland community to this point. I have never been let down at, at all and the support and just the outpouring of, actually the outpouring of support that I, I feel from the community from lacrosse, from football is amazing. And I truly believe that a turf field will be beneficial for many reasons. Increased climate opportunities, you wouldn't have to deal with snow, you wouldn't have to deal with the things that, with frost and such like that coming out of the ground. You're constantly able to get on the field throughout the winter. You don't have to worry about fields being painted, being lined, being cut. It's always there. It's a great opportunity to service these kids. It decreases the amount of injury because you're playing on a stable surface. Uh, it's all-weather, so you don't have to worry about that. It's a great opportunity and I just don't want us to have any regrets looking back if we don't put the turf into the project. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Brian Hollifield. I spoke at the last meeting, but I'm a little bit more prepared this time. I've lived in Highland for 14 years. I have two children in the district and I'm here to show support for the capital improvement project. So during my 14 years, I spent about eight of those coaching youth football, Little League, and even some CYO basketball. I didn't do it because I wanted to be a coach my whole life or that I'm not crazy in the sports. I did it to spend time with my kids and also, um, along the, while I was doing it, I developed relationships with all the other kids that are on these teams. And through those relationships, I developed friendships and relationships with members of the community. And even though I'm not a lifelong resident of Highland, I wasn't born and raised here, I feel like I belong here now because I know so many people just through those eight years of coaching. And I feel like an improvement, a project behind this school where we could put in a turf field and bleachers and concession stands and a bathroom and everything else would afford the entire community to gain relationships and, and a feeling of involvement like I just gained through the eight years of coaching. So I know it's an investment. I know it's expensive, but it's an investment not only in our kids, in our athletes, but in our community. We don't have much else in Highland to, to focus around. I mean, other than the rail trail and the, the walkway, a complex like this would be somewhere where we could come every Friday night and watch a football game, every Saturday watch a soccer game, you know, every Sunday watch a cross. It's an opportunity for all of us to get together, see each other, not just when we have kids in school, when they're actually playing, but we can come back years later, hopefully watch our grandkids play on these fields. In addition to that, um, we kind of have to look at, you know, we're recovering from this pandemic and what it's doing to our town. House prices are going through the roof because people are fleeing urban areas, okay? Um, we're seeing property values go up everywhere and, um, people are moving and they're looking for places to raise a family, okay? When I had this decision 15 years ago, I chose Highland because my wife is from here, but also if you look at Highland, it's perfect. You're across from Poughkeepsie, so you can go to shopping without having the issues of being in the city. Uh, you're not far from Kingston if you wanted to work there. New Pulse is right there, they have stuff to do there. Highland's perfect for a family. So the town's going to grow because house prices are through the roof, contractors want to build. Where do they want to build? They want to build in Highland. So we can't necessarily determine how that growth is going to happen, but if you put in a sports complex and you make a school the focus of the town, then people will come here to build their $500,000 home and live here and raise their family. Having a sports complex would be something they can come here and see and look, look how much these people care for their kids, look at the investment they made in their schools, and they would want to come here and raise their family here. At the last meeting, there was a quick mention of like, um, the pipes in the schools and how eventually with the lead standards and the water standards, eventually you're going to have to just replace an entire building, right? And we're never going to be able to do that as Highland residents just through an annual budget. The way we're going to have to do that is we're going to have to grow the town and grow it smartly, not through apartments and senior housing, but through developments like Highland Hills. So if we want a contractor to come in here and sell these houses, the best way to sell a nice house like that is to have a sports complex, have a school that will, these people want to raise their kids in. So again, I think it's an investment that the school board and the taxpayers have to make, but I think it's an investment for the town and for the kids. Speaking of an investment, you know, I know it's expensive upfront, but you have to look at the cost of what we have now. When you look at maintaining the grass field, the seed, the fertilizer, the paint, the maintenance, cutting it, the lawn mowers, and the man-hours of maintaining this field, I don't know, somebody has to do the math, it's probably 25, 30, $35,000 a year, okay? The life of a turf field is 20 years. So multiply that annual cost over the course of 20 years, you're talking half a million dollars, all right? And every year that we delay and don't do that is another 25, $30,000 that we're, we're wasting. The initial installation of the field is expensive, but in 20 years, you don't have to redo the drainage, you don't have to redo the foundation, you just put a new carpet on top of it. So in 20 years, when you have to replace it, we're not starting the whole, the whole wheel all over again. We already made the investment. Like Coach said, it's not just football, it's soccer, it's lacrosse, and it's almost all year. Whereas right now, we get it, you know, a limited time, a couple of months, and there's only so many days we can use the grass. And again, like Coach Rizzo said...
30 seconds, please.
Sorry, sorry. You have to go all in. You need the seating, you need the bathrooms if you want to encourage people to come out. The concession stands are a money maker. Every time I go anywhere, I'm spending $30, $40 on food before we even sit down. So that's another way to defray the costs. And then the weightlifting, if we can encourage that, that'll make our teams more competitive. But also the same point, weightlifting separate from sports, you don't have to be an athlete to be successful. And kids gain confidence from that and they grow and they develop. So thank you for guys listening to me. The last thing I want to mention real quick, about a month and a half ago, a couple of parents and I started a booster club for the football team. And within six weeks, we have over 200 followers and we've raised $2,500 profit. So it just goes to show a small snapshot of the people in town that are willing to support the athletics. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Janine Gamal, I also spoke at the last public meeting, so I will keep this really brief. I also am in support of the capital campaign. Just to summarize what everybody else has already said, we are a small community that has a lot of pride. We have a lot of good in this community from our teachers to our educators, to our coaches, to the community members themselves. We need to do this for our youth, not just for our youth, but our community members. We need to support the turf field, we need to support the outside features to the turf field such as the bleachers, the concession stand, the track. These are all good things. These are things that are positive for our children in this community. They're positive for all of us who live here and to attract those to keep coming to Highland. Highland is a fabulous community and we need to start backing it, backing each other, backing our children, and backing all the taxpayer and the community members. I support this capital campaign and we need to get it done, all in.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you to the members of the community that spoke on behalf of, um, the proposition that we're going to be putting, uh, putting up to support the turf field and the track. We have taken a position as a board that capital project has to pass also. So if the capital project, not, not the capital project, the, our budget, I'm sorry, our budget, and I apologize. If the budget, um, doesn't pass...
No. The base project.
The base...
The budget is...
Yeah, wow, man. It's a tough night tonight.
The base project.
Yeah, the base project, I'm sorry. The base project, uh, doesn't pass, uh, proposition, regardless of the amount of votes, uh, will not, will not go either. So we have a pecking order here and, but we need everything to be supported. So thank you.
Tom, I'd like to say something. I'd like to thank everyone that came out this evening. Kind of makes me feel real old because looking out there in the audience, um, when I was involved in Little League for almost 45 years, a lot of you guys and gals came through that program. And I'm, I'm proud to see that this is a next step and you're taking over what I did 40-something years ago and try to push athletics in the community. I support the athletic program. I support education. That's why I'm serving on this board for so many years. This board has put together that proposition that I'm hearing everyone saying tonight about a turf field and increased bleachers and a press box. It's going to take a lot to get that to be passed because history in this community, we put up a turf field, uh, I think it was seven or eight years ago, and it got defeated. So you have to go out there and work hard. It can't be just a group of eight to 10 individuals here. You need the support of hundreds of individuals to pass that proposition. It's not an easy task. It's very difficult. You have to deal with the, the various components of the community, those that don't want to spend extra money on anything, those that will. So you have to go out there and campaign and push hard if you want that proposition to pass. It's not an easy task. Uh, I served our community for a good number of years on our recreation department. Uh, I served with Frank Alfonso on the recreation department. We increased and we built fields to support the youth in our community. I was a big proponent back when, when we put lights on the Little League field. Uh, I drove that thing to get those into fruition so our community could benefit from it. Uh, we worked on Tony Williams Field to have two fields down there that probably are one of the better grass fields in the area to, to allow our, our community and our residents to participate. So it's not easy just to say, you know, we're in support. You have to go out and sell it to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Anybody else on the board? Okay. Public comment is over with. Administration proposed budget presentation. Mr. Freer and Ms. McLaren.
Good evening. I'm hoping that's not going to end up being too loud. So our director of technology wanted to, um, use this board because it's apparently one of the newer boards that we're going to be getting for our... Hang on. Is that better?
Lot better.
Okay. That's fine, I understand. Uh, our director of technology wanted to, um, utilize this board because it's one of the newer boards that'll be put in classrooms, so she wanted to, um, have everybody have a chance to look at it and see how they work. So I will be attempting to do that. So this is not, um, this is not actually our proposed budget, this is just a step in the process. Clearly not a final document. What I want to do tonight is review our revenue sources, including our tax levy limit calculation, review where we are right now in the draft budget process, um, review the transportation vehicle proposition that, um, the administration would like to bring forward, and then talk to the board about the revenue portion of our draft budget plan. So I apologize for all of the numbers on this slide, but this is our tax levy limit calculation. The column, which is for 2023, is our calculation for this year. Uh, and I know we went over many of these numbers last time. What I did do was add, um, on the left-hand side after each item, how that number is being, um, put into the calculation because sometimes it's hard to even remember as I'm talking through it. Um, so for instance, you take last year's tax levy, multiply it by the tax-based growth factor, then you add the pilots receivable for last year, um, and then you get, you subtract the capital tax levy exclusion for the prior year, then you multiply it by the allowable growth factor, which is 2% this year, even though, as I mentioned last time, inflation is far above that. Uh, we are capped at 2%. Then you subtract the pilots receivable for the current year and you get a tax levy limit before the allowable exclusions. Um, so for us, that year, that number this year would be 29,289,157. And then you add back in the allowable amount for the capital tax levy, capital exclusions. And our total this year is 1,412,944 and that gives you the tax levy limit for the current... current budget that we're talking about. So that would be $30,702,101, which is a 2.67 increase, which is a little bit higher than last year, but lower than two years ago. And so that is the number that has been filed with the Comptroller's Office. We did, you do have to sort of declare when you file it on March 1st whether there is a plan to override the cap, and I did indicate that we would not be looking to override the cap when I filed with the Comptroller's Office. So, and you will notice that under the exclusions, there is a line for the teachers' retirement system and the employees' retirement system. And although those rates are certainly increasing each year, they are not increasing enough to qualify for an exemption. Any questions on that calculation?
In the year '22, is the capital tax levy for prior year $131,000, is that correct?
I'm sorry, Sue, that must have been a mistype.
Okay.
It would not have been 130. But thank you for picking that up, when I was trying to recreate it from the state websites. That's funny, our superintendent picked the typo up last time. So when we're looking at our revenues, we do tend to collapse them into some more easily reviewed buckets. So right now, our state aid budgeted is $15,879,221, which is an increase of $800,000 from the prior year. I know that it was noted that our foundation aid has increased. Our foundation aid actually has increased by over $1 million. But our other aids, which are expense-based, where the state determines your aid based on what you spent in that aid category in the prior year, those, some of those have decreased. So the net result is an increase of $800,000. Something that I found out earlier this week, I guess yesterday, because they can only project what they know, and we have a lot of people working to help us maximize our aid, there was an opportunity to have an analysis done for excess cost aid, so that is the aid that applies to our higher-need students for those costs. And I did receive a projection that the aid the state has provided us in that category for next year is actually not as much as they believe we're going to get. So when we look at this slide again at the next presentation, that number is actually going to go up. They indicated that they believe that we're going to get $168,000 more in that aid category than what the governor's run has told us. Our Medicaid aid, I actually increased our projection to $100,000, because that is more in line with what we've been getting. Our pilot projection is actually based on the pilots that are receivable next year, so that's $43,000. You see the other revenue sources, which is kind of a large bucket. The majority of that category is our BOSI's refund from our prior year. But also included in that would be our tax payment penalties, the interest that we receive on our bank accounts, which in, you know, when I first started in this business, was in the hundreds of thousands, and is now, we're lucky if we're in tens of thousands, but that's in that category. When we surplus items like vehicles, the income we receive from the sale of those goes in this category.
Three, I, two, I, three, I.
Are there questions?
I was making the comment that COVID, the COVID period adversely affected this category, because potentially there weren't as many expenses as in a normal school year, resulting in generating less aid. Is any of that attributed to this?
Absolutely. One of the things that our Transportation Director and I were very upset with was a reduction in transportation aid. And every few years, a district has to do an analysis of the runs that they've done. And the analysis that we did last resulted in a reduction in our transportation aid for next year's projection. We are going to do another one of those this year, so I'm hoping that that will be readjusted, and we will recoup some of that. But when you have reduced runs, because you're not doing any after-school programs, you're not doing any trips, you're not necessarily in school all the time, that's going to negatively affect you. But yeah, I think a lot of districts have seen a reduction in expense-driven aids because of the COVID period, and hopefully we will bounce back from that.
Victoria, didn't they receive some federal COVID funding last year for their budget? That's no longer-
No, that was, that actually came in through the general fund, and that's done, and now we have the other grants that Dr. Boyd has been providing you information for. One other thing to note that we have done, Mr. Miller's administrative support, Jen Pelayo, has been working very diligently with me, because shortly after I started, I got a phone call from someone with the Office of Homeland Security, which seemed very odd to me. But he was actually offering to help us through the process of recouping money from FEMA for some of our COVID expenses. And she has done an incredible job getting all of the documentation that we needed, because they want every possible piece of information and piece of paper, right down to front and back of checks that have been cashed for everything. But she is actually, we already have gotten, I believe, $78,000, and we have another claim in for about $99,000. So that's going to come in this year and add to our fund balance, which is very helpful. I think, I think that's really going to be the most of the amount that we're going to be able to get back, but we've been working, she's really done the lion's share of the work.
Good job.
But, you know, when you get a call like that, you go, wait, we can, we can get some of that money back? Yes, we'd like to. Show us how to do that. So back to this chart, unless there's other questions so far? No? We're good? The transfer from the debt service fund. So last year, in the revenue budget, there was $158,515. As of June 30th last year, there was about $1 million in that fund. And that is, as Trustee Gilmore had asked over the past few days, that fund is created by the excess money that has been borrowed and meant to be used for capital projects. If there's anything left, if, because we obviously know that as a school district, we can't go over budget for a capital project. But if we are under budget, then we can't just spend that money. It has to be done very transparently. And really, the only thing to do with it is to budget it as a revenue, as a transfer from the debt service fund. So we did budget the $158,000 in this year's budget. We have not applied it yet, I don't think we need it right now. And hopefully, when we do close the next capital project that we're working on the final cost reports, there may be an additional almost $500,000 to be added to that fund. I have spoken with the external auditor, Mr. Sobin, and he said, yes, the appropriate thing to do is to budget that as a revenue, to transfer in, to offset the levy. You obviously want to do it over a few years, so that it's not a large infusion of money that you then need to recover from. But one of my goals in tonight's discussion with the board would be to identify how much money you want to budget from that fund. And then, there had been discussion at the board table last time about reducing the next line, which is the fund balance, to be applied to offset the levy. And between those two, as we get further in the presentation, once I know those numbers, then I'll be able to look better at the difference that we have right now between our revenue and our expenses. And, you know, in this presentation, it looks like a large number, but it's still pretty early in the process to think that that's an issue. You know, this will be, I hope, several hundred thousand dollars, and that will bring that number down. The addition of the excess cost aid will bring that number down. And we may still fluctuate the other way, because as we know, Dr. Boyd will be holding CSE meetings still, and so we might have increased costs that come out of that because of student needs. Or we may be able to bring students who are in out-of-district programs back, and that may reduce it. So this is still a living document. You know, I don't ever want people to look at these and see the numbers that are here at this point and think, this is doom and gloom, and we're going to have to drastically cut programs and hurt kids. That's not, that's not where we are. But it's definitely a discussion item. So between those two categories, I need to get some direction, so that we can move forward and look at the delta that I do have. And the last line, obviously, being the tax levy. So should we continue through the presentation, or do we want to talk about those numbers now? Because my one absolute from the end of tonight is to have numbers to put in here.
Well, I could certainly speak to the fund balance applied to budget. I like the fact that there's a movement of decreasing that amount. The other thing that I want to talk about is, do we still have the ability to allocate some of the aid coming back to reduce that even further?
Well, the aid that we have coming in right now is all in that top line.
Okay.
So it's in the revenue budget already.
I'm with Mike, just in terms of, I know we've talked about for a long time reducing that amount. We have, over time, unfortunately, in certain cases, had to increase it for various reasons. I know when I started on the board, it was definitely not at 1.3, it was definitely below a million. We went up to a million, now we're up to 1.3. I think, you know, applying that to getting it down is definitely my first priority, without impacting, obviously, program and everything else. With the additional aid coming in, I know it's already included in here. Can you, I know when you say, when you look at the debt service fund, we're going to be closing out that project and having extra in there. Is that a way to reduce that 1.3 as well? And what does, I guess my other question is, because since my term on the board, I've seen that go up. If we're able to get that down this year, what does that mean for future years, right? Because we're in a pattern right now, where we have to carry that forward, otherwise we can't sustain ourselves. So how do we break that pattern, right? Do we, is it a matter of the way we're budgeting from an expenditure perspective? Right? Because right now, our budget is built, and I know we've had conversation with our auditors that we spend a very high percentage of what we've budgeted. So I don't think it's a matter of, you know, budgeting incorrectly, but I'm just wondering how we get out of that continual cycle.
It's actually really difficult to get out of that cycle, because you always do want to have fund balance built in. You know, one of the, probably the biggest expense you're going to have in your budget is your health insurance. And so you have to always keep in mind that people can, when you hire people, they can, they can pick a family plan, which is the most expensive, they can pick a single plan, which is half of that, or they can have a buyout, which is almost nothing. But you have to be ready for any of those situations. And for us, our open enrollment is mid-year, and people switch in January. In some other districts, that's not the cycle they're on. In some other districts, it's open enrollment in the spring, they switch on July 1st. So you don't, it's kind of a different timing dynamic.
So in that case, what would you say, we're, last year we were at, or this current year, we're at 1.3. Looking to ease that down in terms of being fiscally responsible, right? We're saying we want that reduced. What is our ideal level to have that at? Is it five? Is it three? Is it two?
Oh, my gosh.
Well, over time, like thinking long-term budget. I mean, I think I want to not just think about this year, but think about long-term. Where do we want to get to? What is our goal?
I guess the question would be, why, why do you feel the need to be that low? I don't know.
Well, I guess the converse, right? Why is it unhealthy to have it at 1.3? Because we have reliance every year. If we can't reproduce that 1.3, our next year, you know, looking long-term, right? This is looking year-to-year, looking long-term, if we can't make that year-to-year, we have a huge budget issue, right?
Well, I think it actually kind of works in concert. As you, as you refine your budget, you're going to have less left each year.
Right.
So it's going to whittle it down. When we talk about using the transfer from debt service instead of this, that's also a short-term solution. Because, you know, we'll use that for a few years, and then it'll be gone.
Right. And that's-
It's all, it's all got to happen at the same time.
And that's where it comes in. How do we sustain that?
Right. It's just, it's reducing the flexibility that's in the budget as we move forward. So at some point, there's got to be a balance. I'm not sure what that is for Highland yet. I know in my prior district, we had more fund balance than that applied each year.
Really? Okay. Interesting.
But, you know, every district has its own culture and its own comfort level.
Right.
So, you know, I'm not sure that I would want to go down more than the, to the million in one year.
Yeah, absolutely.
But then, alternately, we still, we should be using the transfer from debt service, because that money should be given back to the taxpayers.
Right. Agreed. I guess, you know, just in, in thinking through and talking through it for a number of years, I agree with using that to bring it down. I guess what I would challenge your office to do is, okay, long-term, where do we see being stable for Highland? Like you said, every district has kind of different nuances and different ways that they do things. What is healthy for Highland?
And I'm not sure I could answer that.
No, I'm not looking for an answer now, for sure. But, you know, over time, I think it's a long-term plan.
Yeah.
When, I'm just going to share the number that comes to mind, if you were to ask me that question, it's 600 to 650,000. Because I know, in a poor budget cycle, where we would have to reduce program, beyond that level, you really start cutting academic-level programs, not just fringe. We've done the exercise enough, and whether that was bad budgeting process, we can talk about, but I'm just throwing that out there.
No, and that's a, that's a great way of kind of getting your head wrapped around what that level is. Appreciate you sharing that.
Victoria, if, do I understa, let's say that we throw the fund balance applied to budget back up to 1.3, and then we move that debt service back over, we're still going to have a gap, correct? From your, the draft?
For right now, yes. But as I said, you know, I'm not going to, I don't want to focus on that so much tonight, because once we, once, I don't want you to solve the budget gap tonight. That's not, I'm not asking you to do that. Once we have our revenues nailed down, then we can go back and look more closely. But from my perspective, it doesn't make sense for me to go and just cut, if I don't know what I'm trying to cut to. And I want to make sure that we're, we're doing things the most responsible way.
If we have about three board meetings before we have to adopt, when do you think that conversation is expected?
When I have a revenue target, then I can go back, look at the programs, bring it to the administration, and say, this is where we are, this is what we need to get to. You know, I will still look at the things that I can control, I will look back at health insurance, I will look at the amount of health insurance that we have budgeted in the grants, which is something that I was looking at with the treasurer today. is something that I was looking at with the treasurer today. Because there's some money budgeted in the grants for health insurance that I need to make sure that we can take out of here. But then, again, that's one of those things. If I pull out 300,000 from health insurance because it's budgeted in the grants and it's a two-year grant, on year three, we're going to suddenly have a shock to the system. So, it's going to be a balancing act. But until I know what my number is that we need to hit, I don't want to stress people out and say, "You just have to cut." That's, that's not, that's not kind.
Thank you. That sounds like an intelligent, thoughtful approach and we probably worry a little too much at this particular point, so I appreciate it.
I appreciate your worrying. It means you care.
It's our industry.
So, do people have a feeling in terms of the transfer from the debt service fund? Knowing that right now, we have a little over a million, we're probably going to end up with about a million and a half over that, in that fund. And so, if you want to spread that over three years, four years?
I would say, let's transfer an amount that won't be a shock to the system. So, you need to guide me on what that dollar figure would be.
Well, I mean, if we have, if we have a million and a half, if we want to spread it over four years, then we can kind of, we could even start higher and go lower, look at a way to strategize that. But if you, if you feel like...
If you feel comfortable with spreading it out over four years, I think that's great.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to dump all of that in short-term because we would not recover from that.
Right. Okay. I like it.
So, is that okay with everybody if we look at a four-year spread?
I think four years is good.
Okay. Great.
Okay. So, that'll be 250,000, which is nice. All kinds of trouble.
So...
Where we got it.
The next slide just kind of shows where, where we are right now. And as I said, this is, this is still very much a draft. But you can look at the general support category, which is down slightly. The bulk of our increase is in instruction, which is the bulk of the budget. And that is the appropriate place for there to be a large increase. Transportation is going up a little bit, but that might fluctuate as we identify programs for students. We may need to modify that. And employee benefits are going up. Our debt service is essentially remaining the same, but overall, the budget increase right now is 2.2. So, I wanted to just kind of give some examples of the drivers of the major increase. So, salary, overall, increasing 677,000. Benefits, about 715,000. Quite honestly, our BOSI's projections right now show an increase of 600, almost 645,000. And I know Dr. Boyd and I were talking about, we've seen across the board increases in rates with BOSI's. We were very surprised this year mid-year when we got a Duchess BOSI's rate increase mid-year for the current year. Ulster BOSI's has not done that and as a practice doesn't, but Duchess did.
Yeah, it's not necessarily a huge increase in actual placements of students. It's really more about the costs of each of the programs that we saw. And like Victoria said, you know, seeing a mid-year increase and then, you know, a month later, oh yeah, and increases for next year as well. So, it's a pretty significant jump at the cost just per program, per student.
And one of the, the programs that I was surprised to see such an increase, and I noted it here in number two, the BOSI's Career and Tech program for us is going up by 183,000. And that is a combination of their increase per seat, which is how many students attend their programs. And I am a huge proponent of the Career and Tech program. I think they provide things that individual districts just simply can't afford to provide on their own. But the way that they create their Career and Tech commitment for a district, we don't choose how many seats we're signing up for. It's done based on a rolling three-year average of your attendance so that it provides them with some stability, which I understand. But for us, we've had increasing enrollment, which is great opportunities for kids, but I'm, I'm not accustomed to seeing an increase of this magnitude in that one program and that's what we have this year. So, that was, that was a pretty big driver for us.
From what I understand from Dr. Corey Worrup, over 100 kids enrolled in CTE. That's, that's incredible.
So, our, our commitment went from 68 to 81 students in one year, or the charge that our, or the number of students that our fee is based on. So, we might be over 100 this year, but it has bumped up our average pretty considerably. So, again, it's, you know, it's a good thing. It's programs and it's benefiting our students, but that was a pretty major driver of our, of our cost increase.
Is that the net cost after the aid?
That is actually the cost that we have to budget for because the aid comes in the next year.
Right.
But based on some of your questions, I did ask BOSI's if they would give us a per-coaster aid analysis. And I had thought that I have seen one of those in, in past years. They said they don't typically run that. I'm hoping to get one from their treasurer.
Yeah, okay. Maybe I'll push a little on my side, too.
Yeah.
Right.
So, the next slide is just a very simplistic show of where we were when I put this presentation together. As I said, I didn't, I'm, I'm not asking people to panic here. This is, you know, it's just a, it's a number at a time, a number at a moment in time. Keep in mind that even between when I did this and today, I found out that I think we can anticipate that extra 168,000 in the additional excess cost aid. So, already this 983 gap is down to 815. So, when we add the transfer from the, the capital fund, then we will bring that down again a little bit more. And then we'll know where we really are.
Victoria, just a quick question for you.
Yep.
On the, on page five, there's inter-fund transfers. Is that from the school lunch program?
That is to the school lunch program.
To the, okay. Thank you.
But, I don't know, Marie's been doing great work. Maybe we'll go the other direction soon. It can be from the school lunch program. So, working on our vehicle replacement schedule, these are the vehicles that we are looking to have the voters approve in a proposition this year. The total would be 322,000. It would be a 165-passenger bus, 124-passenger wheelchair-accessible vehicle. I believe that we only have one wheelchair vehicle left, Mr. Miller. Could you just nod your head?
No.
Three, but one is not good.
Three with no spares.
Three with no spares. That's what it is. We have no spares. One Suburban and one 30-passenger vehicle. And so, this is all, these all fit into our debt service schedule with Bernie Donigan. They were planning on this. This is part of our long-term plan. So, I need to just ensure that the board is comfortable with this so that we can do all the appropriate legal notices. The proposition language was provided and is here in the presentation. And this is what the voters would actually see on the ballot.
Peter, in light of exploding gasoline prices, do you, I'm not the, I really don't understand a lot of this stuff, but do you find that the propane buses are saving us a ton of money?
The higher the gasoline price goes, typically, the more savings there is with propane. The propane is high, too, so the ratio is not as great as it was last time gasoline was high. But there is some savings, but not as significant as it is. The savings now is more immediate, so it is...
Absolutely. My question. Yeah, I think, I think when we were really talking about converting the fleet to propane, one of the biggest points for me was the lowered maintenance cost versus, right, diesel. And, and we are realizing that and that's good to hear. I appreciate it.
So, we can't do all these vehicles propane?
The smaller buses are gasoline-only.
So, there's no choice? Okay.
To your knowledge, I think we asked this last year, and sometimes the years seem short and other times they seem long, but any advancement in electric-powered vehicles, I think that was something we were also interested in. When available, we might want to pilot something like that, but...
An electric 65-passenger bus right now costs 40,000.
I remember that part of the conversation. It would take years to recoup if ever.
And no, no grant money?
Absolutely.
Peter, if I'm not mistaken, I think last year, we were well over 450 for bus replacements, 450,000. Do you see this pattern continuing where we're only replacing one large bus each year? I know last year, I believe we replaced three large buses. I'm correct?
I think it was three, one was because of this...
Well, it was, right.
We are very relatively stable on large buses for a number of years and then it might become a little bit of a chest pain. Because right now, I think there's roughly 11 buses that are pretty much the same age.
Because I think this is one of the lesser amounts in a good number of years as far as bus replacement. So, I think that's, that's a positive.
I think that one or two more years might be pretty suitable, so.
At some point in time, this year or next.
Speaking of gasoline, Victoria, do we have enough in the budget for...
I was just thinking, that's going to be one of those lines that we're going to continue to be looking at because prices...
If this war drags out, we could see this long-term.
Right. And, you know what, honestly, that might be something that we would look at if you, to Heather, Heather and Mike's point, in terms of using fund balance to offset items in the budget, that could be something that we could look at and say, "You know what? For this coming year, we're going to increase the budget by this much because of this one-time thing."
We hope.
And, and maybe I would say to you at the next meeting, you know what, I would like to put 1.1 million in the appropriated fund balance, but knowing that, that, that extra 100,000 would be attributable to that gasoline increase in that line. And then, in the next year, hopefully, when things normalize, we can pull it out of the revenue and out of the expenses and wipe it away.
Just a point of clarification. If it's a good idea, it's mine. If it's a bad idea, it's Heather's, just to...
Shared credit. You act as a board.
That's what I was saying.
On a point of that, that also involves electricity and fuel. So, based on the estimates that we had for finishing up this year, we've already moved 10,000 more, like, from energy.
Right. All energy is, is very high right now.
Yep.
So, I believe that we, if this is okay with the board, we'll be putting this for board approval at the next meeting. And that will allow us to do the legal notices in a timely manner. But we wanted to share it with you, make sure you were aware and comfortable with it before we put it on an agenda for approval.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I think the next slide, I already got my answers, which I very much appreciate. And then, moving forward, we have another meeting thankfully in just two weeks. And then, pretty much the board must adopt by the April 20th meeting. So, we do have several meetings between then and now and I would anticipate that we'll be giving you status updates as we go through each meeting. You'll get sick of hearing from me. Are there any other questions?
Good job.
Great. Thank you so much.
Okay, now we move on to the consent part of our agenda. As we have, and I'm looking at items A1 through D6.2, does anybody on the board have any questions or want to remove an item for further discussion at a later meeting?
I'd like to remove under appointments, I.
Three, three I?
Three I.
Yes. So noted. Okay, so I will, any other ones? Anybody else? So, I'll amend this consent to A1 through B2 and then, three, three-two through six, D6.2.
Phew.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Just need a motion.
Do I have a motion, please? Sue and Heather. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, Mr. President, we do have some of our newly hired staff with us this evening. So, if I could have them stand up and we can introduce them to the board. I think I see Francis. Francis will be a teacher's aide at the elementary school. Congratulations. Welcome to Highland.
Thank you.
And I believe our newly appointed school lunch program director is here with us this evening, John Matthews. Congratulations. Francis will be starting with us right away and John takes the position July 1st, replacing Maria. And again, Maria, we are just so indebted to what you have done to bring the department to where it is today and we know it'll be in good hands with John. And I know we'll get the two of you together so that we can make sure that the transition is smooth. Thank you.
I've got my still, I can't help myself. Maria, you, you have made this district a better place and I can't say enough about the fine job that you've done all these years. We just, it's been great.
I second that. So, we're going to try to soak you up these last few months here, all right?
I love being a husky all the years.
Once a husky, always a husky.
I was just going to say that.
Say it, Mr. Brier.
And then, just one more, one more item. We do have a retirement on there this evening. Jamie Riley, a teacher's aide in the district, she's retiring after 31 years. So, I think she, hopefully she will be watching from home at some point. Congratulations, Jamie. We thank you for your years of service.
So, Assistant Superintendent comment?
Wait, wait, we pulled something out.
Oh, you have to, what are you doing with it? Are you just tabling it?
We're tabling it, yeah, that item, tabling it to our next meeting.
Okay. Okay?
Do you want to take a, did they have to vote on that? To table it?
No. We already did. We voted.
I just, I just moved to, to remove it from, you're going to table it?
You want to, you want to remove it or table it? We removed it, so are we tabling it to the next meeting?
Yeah, I believe his intent was to move it, so we vote separately on it now or...
That's what I think.
Well, we can have a discussion on that. If you want to table it, that's fine.
Table it for more information.
Yeah, we'll table it till our next meeting, for more information. Okay?
Slipped my mind because my, on, on the change order for Iron Sword Number Two, at 1,499.40, I had a question because on the change order itself, there's what's called a directive from the architect, changing condition... there's what's called a directive from the architect, changing condition. And if you read through that, the box that was checked was clarification. And under clarification, it says no cost impact. If the architect had checked for pricing, then there would have been that proposed, which in our language is a P C O, proposed change order. Then they would critique that and accept a price or not. I'm just curious of why it went to a change order when the architect's directive in the changing condition was no cost impact.
Yeah, go ahead. Because you know, you understand it more than I do.
All right. So under the A I A document, there are three choices that you can make. One is a request for a price, which, based on the circumstances of what happened, as I think that happened in light of a four services meeting, and we talked about the keypad being in the rain. And it was in the process of the construction. And right after that, we spoke to the architect, or the architect was there that night, I believe. And we determined that, we'd asked them how much it would cost on a verbal price vote instead of putting out a A I A price vote request. The number came back, and a order was given to proceed, which they did. Apparently, you cannot cross out that line or modify it on an A I A document. So the industry was no choice, and there was no holdup to it. That turned into a change order. It was supposed to be a change order because we requested it. But if the verbiage on the document only gives you three choices, one is T and M on request for price or no cost. Those are the three choices.
And it was checked no cost?
It was checked no cost because the other two didn't apply either.
Okay. I'll, I'll accept that. But knowing what we've gone through with Iron Sword, I mean, we're just very easily going to accept a fourteen hundred and ninety-nine dollar change order.
It was documentation that we received on this was just housekeeping because it hadn't been done because we didn't have a construction manager in place for that piece of property. But that housekeeping was all done to finish up what we did prior to that.
I like that. I'm sure it's within allowances. I'm sure of that.
I understand, I understand, I understand your logic behind it, Peter.
It wasn't my logic. We, I had an in-depth discussion this morning.
I did have.
I didn't embed that in.
And I think we did have a construction manager on board because Tom Chester signed this change order from the Palumbo Group.
I know that.
Okay.
It cost you fifteen hundred dollars for that signature. Maybe. I had another comment, and it's not related to that. But I'm happy to see that the Disney trip just got moved forward as a result of our approval. And I just want to, Mr. Freer, I just want to make sure that our students are getting these end of the year celebrations that they deserve. We're in a post-COVID period. And that really goes to any of the field trips, eighth grade. Return to normal means we get these end of the year celebrations back to these children to the degree possible, all right?
We are doing everything that we can to get everything back in place. There are going to be some things.
Field day. I mean, it goes right on down the line. All those types of things.
Yes. But there are some things that probably would be too late to get back in. There's a couple because they would have taken more planning.
Understood.
Get us.
Maybe a modified approach to what we can do.
Yep.
I hear you. Thank you.
We're done? Yes. Ready to move on? Assistant Superintendent?
Good evening. I'll give a couple of updates from the NISCUS conference. And then I'm sure Mr. Freer will be sharing some others as well. One of the things that came out was a look at some changes to certifications specific to the area of special education and literacy. They didn't give us specifics, but it's been floated out around there on how they partition it out. So special education certifications used to be a K through twelve certification. And then they separated it out. And then they added some additional requirements. Over the last year or two, you might have heard me talk about S O H. And that was some of the additional paperwork that we had to do for some specific classes. So I think they've heard that it's, makes it difficult sometimes. So the flexibility, we're excited that they might be moving towards some of these. For our certification, it gives us more flexibility. When, you know, working with teachers and hiring teachers, they did caution that, you know, when they make changes in certifications, it takes time because the higher ed institutions have to make some changes to their programs. So the classes that they're putting out for students would change. So I don't know when this will take place, how it will take place. But it was very nice to hear that they're listening and they are acknowledging some of the challenges that we're facing with certifications and with hiring staff. So we were very happy to hear that. And as I said, Mr. Freer will add on a few other items about certifications, too, that they're, made some changes to. This Friday, we're going to be meeting with folks from Ulster Bocce's to review our I S R. So that's some of the items we put forward, making initial commitments for Bocce services for the upcoming school year. So we usually put them out, and then we'll meet with them to discuss if they have any questions or review it prior to us making a final service request. So that will be this Friday. We'll review what we are requesting of them. Our Special Olympics team, we do have a new coach this year. You know, we had a shift in our flex program, and that individual has taken on the program. There are a bunch of requirements to become a Special Olympics coach. So our Mrs. Heisenmuth is working through some of those. But we do look like they're going to hopefully start to begin some practices in preparation. It looks like the time trials will be on April tenth, and the potential games on either April thirtieth or May first. I didn't see a place. They used to hold them at West Point. It was a great spot to hold the games. And then that got on pause. They did them virtually last year, but I haven't heard if it's going to be back at West Point. But it is a really nice, they do a really great job putting on that event. Other than that, you know, our annual review meetings have been going on as we're looking at our placements for next year. We had all of our projections put in place, you know, with Ms. McLaren on where we think students are ending up. But we won't have a final say until the C S E meetings do take place. We've done a great job, and this is kudos to the main office staff and the Ms. Beazad in my office of coordinating our meetings and trying to spread them out as much as possible between the buildings to alleviate our difficulty with sub-coverage. So trying to find a good balance of getting all the number of meetings in that we need while not putting a strain on the daily instruction. So kudos to them and a big thank you for helping to coordinate that. And we do have some additional funding that continues to kind of roll out through the American Rescue Plan. You know, we hear certain things every couple of months. We get, you know, an email will come out that you may have an allocation. So they came out with one for additional allocations for McKinny Vento. So the first part, one, we were not, we were not given an allocation. And then just came out another one, part two, and we were given an allocation. So we'll be looking at what we would like to do with some of that funding. And it'll be more applications that we'll be putting in for grants. And similarly, we had some additional fundings through I D E A through that avenue that we'll be looking at what we can do with it for the funds that we do have control over internally.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. Mr. Freer?
Okay. So as Patrick said, we spent the last few days in Albany at the NISCUS conference. This morning, the Commissioner of Education met with all of the superintendents and assistant superintendents. And it is just such a refreshing, a refreshing message when you sit in front of the person who's in charge of the whole state, and she actually is listening to what it is that superintendents have been saying and asking for. I haven't been a superintendent long enough, but I know as a teacher, I would answer those surveys quite regularly that would come out, or sorry, when I was a principal. And I'd answer those surveys, and I always felt like my, my answers went to the abyss. She made it very clear today that they, the department is changing. Her whole message this morning was about customer service at the State Education Department, which, if anyone's ever dealt with the State Education Department, they're all well-meaning people, but they are overwhelmed, they're swamped. The office doesn't get back to you on a regular basis. And she is dedicated to reworking that. As Patrick said, she's reworking the certification office. She's looking at increasing support so that response times are much more timely. He mentioned the teacher certification in the, in special education and in literacy. But there are also pushes to get the world language certifications out there. If someone is holding a world language certification in one particular subject area but has an interest in another, instead of it being another full program, they are looking at ways to expedite. So let's say you're a Spanish teacher, but you have interest in French, you have some knowledge there, and you, you can show that. Maybe it's not a full program that you have to go through to get duly certified, which that would be incredible because we know it's been difficult in this district for quite some number of years to, to get a French teacher. And now it's looking like Spanish teachers are going to be difficult to find as well. She based her entire message about, around the theme of civility and bringing civility back into the state, into the classrooms. It was just such a great message. Some interesting things that have not been publicly announced yet, but will be shortly, is that Regents exams will return in June and in August. That was something that was still on the fence. But she said that that was something that is going to be announced in the next few days. So it was okay for us to share that with our folks back at home. Patrick and I attended many sessions, and I'll try to give you a full rundown of some of the sessions that we went to. But, and I'll do that in my Friday update. But I went to a couple of sessions on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We attended together a human resources session, and that one was sort of depressing because we're hearing about the shortages in teachers and bus drivers and cafeteria workers, teaching assistants across the state. Now, we, I actually felt okay at one point because some of the things that they were saying, they were having a hard time finding, we haven't experienced that yet. But I think it's just a matter of time. So, so there was some really good discussion. They also, this, this organization, I think the name of it is escaping me. It's the Association of School Personnel, I believe it is. They're actually going to be working closely with civil service to try to get civil service to relax a little bit. Now, the difficulty there is they can talk to civil service at the state level, but every county's civil service handles things differently. So that's going to be a longer term process, but all falling under, you know, the guidance of the folks working up there. So it was a great conference. It was a fast and furious two and a half days. And we just want to thank the board for supporting us and allowing us to go there to speak with other superintendents from around the state. You do gain a lot of insight and, you know, you have lunch with the director from NISBA, and you pick his brain about, you know, things from hiring practices to grievances. And, you know, so those were conversations that you have that you wouldn't necessarily just pick up the phone and, and call somebody. Except now I will because now I have a contact. So, so that was great. Last week, you all are aware of this. We sent the message out last week regarding masking in schools. We made it an optional wear here in the Highland School District, just as every other school in the county. I just want to go on record thanking our community. To my knowledge, we had no issues of anyone getting on anyone else's case about still wearing a mask. So that was one of our fears, is that some students would, would feel uncomfortable. To my knowledge, there was no, there was no issue of that. So thank you to the community. I brought a gift for everyone in the audience tonight. I have lots of COVID tests. So over there, feel free to take as many COVID at-home test kits as you'd like. Those are coming down from the state on a regular basis. We will be making times for folks to do drive-throughs. I sent home in the, in the email to the parents that if anyone wants kits, all they need to do is send a note into their school nurse, and we'll send them home with the students in, in backpacks. I handed out, with Mr. Boyd's help and Mrs. Beal, the L P N from the elementary school. At last week's concert, we handed out about a thousand of those test kits to families that were at the very first event where masks were optional. So, you know, we felt that it was a large group event that folks might want to test a few days after just for peace of mind. We will do that again tomorrow at the instrumental chorus, or the instrumental concert, as long as we don't have a snow issue, which I'm hearing there might be. But that brings me to the scholarship concerts. The coral one last week, phenomenal. Kudos to the music department for putting that on. The instrumental is tomorrow. If by chance there's an early dismissal or a school closure, the snow date would be next Monday, the fourteenth. Just a reminder, the Spring Gala is scheduled for April twenty-third at Novella's. That is hosted by our Educational Foundation. So please keep that on your radar. There will be flyers going out soon, and tickets are soon to be available. I will be meeting with Holly Brooker this Friday to start pulling together some stories for our budget newsletter. I'll be talking to the principals tomorrow about ideas that they have to highlight some of the things that have been happening in our buildings and in our departments so that we can highlight them in the budget newsletter. We've finished our second round of parent-teacher conferences for the year at all three of the buildings. And I've heard that those went extremely well. To Sue's point earlier, I don't know if it was here in executive session, so. But talking about use of Zoom. I do think that it, that made it easier for, for some parents to get on those conferences with the Zoom aspect. So I don't know. I mean, I think we will have in-person options in the future, but I think we'll always keep that other option available to those families that can't make it here. You did not get this flyer yet, but you will, because I will send it to you on Friday. But this is the First Annual Brooks House Barbecue. It's hosted by the Highland High School P T A. It will be a food truck that's going to come to our campus, and you can order dinner on my birthday. So you can also bring me a piece of cake. April fourth, twenty twenty-two, from three to six. I'll include this in your Friday update. So if you could support the P T A at the high school, that would be appreciated. At our next meeting, we will, we'll go back to having our leaders of the pack at that second board meeting. And the athletic department will also be recognizing some student athletes at that meeting. I want to also thank the Highland Rotary. You might have seen the, the Facebook post, and I know in the board update, I've included that for you. But they've donated books to our third graders and our sixth graders. Every third grader got a copy of The Littles Take a Trip by John Peterson. And every sixth grader got a copy of Restart by Gordon Corman. So thank you to the Rotary. I also just want to, I want to mention something that Mrs. Brooks, our data analysis and assessment coordinator, has been working on. And she needs to hear that we are very happy with the amount of effort that she's put in to get this digital survey, this digital equity survey off the ground. And she's reached out to two hundred families this week to try to get those answers. That is, that is a survey that we need to have a hundred percent participation on by the state. And it's, it's an arduous, arduous undertaking. But I want to thank her, and I will thank her again tomorrow. And then finally, I don't know if anyone knows this, but this was also one of the themes of this morning's conference. So for all the ladies in the room, today is International Women's Day. We celebrate and uplift. Women's Day. We celebrate and uplift all women leaders today. So thank you to all the women who have stepped forward to serve our community. We are a stronger community because of the leadership you have provided, and there's a hashtag that goes with this, so hashtag #breakthebias. Check it out. The website was actually pretty wonderful. And I think, I think I've covered everything that I needed to cover for tonight, unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Joel.
Well, good. Thank you.
I have a question. It actually pertains to our consent agenda, but I think it's for Joel also. On the itinerary for the Disney trip.
Yeah.
We've normally approved these out-of-state trips prior to, two weeks before they're ready to go.
Yes, you absolutely do.
I was kind of, I mean, I gotta apologize, I was away since Thursday, but I just looked at it quickly. Number one, there's a typo, because the agenda says March 25th through to 27th. It's actually March 24th through to 27th. There's a typo there. But do we know how many students are going? Do we know if there's scholarships for those that are not, are not able to fund $1,200?
I have a number. It's in my email.
Do we know the chaperone ratio? I mean, normally when we approve these trips, we've done it prior to the, the group initiating it, because what if the board says no? Now we're kind of locked in two weeks before the...
I, I think they did present and ask for approval.
I don't think they did.
Not on the Disney trip.
Not this year, Mike.
No.
No, it was definitely something.
In years past, yeah.
Yeah, it was definitely something that fell off the radar. The problem with the Disney trip is right up until about January 20th, we weren't sure if it was even going to happen. So there were deposits made, and they needed to make a determination on that day whether they were going to keep those deposits. And I think just in the transition of my office and the Assistant Superintendent's office, it did fall off the radar. And I got the, the message from Mr. Zimmer and Ms. McLaren when I was in Albany, saying that we needed to get this on the agenda. And we were going to wait to do it at the next meeting, but that would have been like
Two days.
Two days beforehand. So I don't have firm numbers right now. I think, I think it's 47 students?
I just didn't get the email. It's 47 seniors that are...
I think that's the number that I saw this morning, when I asked them. But I can get you more information.
No, I'm not, believe me, I'm not against these trips. I think they're, they're valuable.
Yeah.
But we, we, as a board, you know, if something does happen, and we say, well, geez, we didn't know anything about it, we approved it two weeks before they, they left.
Right.
It's, you know, it's an out-of-state trip. It's not like we're going, you know, across the river to a
Correct.
To a play or something.
The chaperone ratio you asked, what's the chaperone ratio?
I don't have that either. I can get, I will have it for you for Friday.
I think it's great. And all, do all interested students, are they all in, like, are there any children that would like to go that?
They're always, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I believe, I'm working here, that we have accommodated the students that are...
Oh, good. Good. Okay, thank you.
That's what I was gonna say.
How you doing?
Good.
You good?
Use this opportunity for one question that I have, I'm sorry. With the consent agenda, we had a motion and a second, but will we all approve of that? That, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. And that one item will appear on the next agenda. Thank you. Okay. Board of Education, new business. School Board candidate nominating petition, Highland Central School District. Petitions for nominating candidates for the Office of Board Education for Highland Central School District are available at the central office between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, April 18th, 5:00 PM. Two terms that are up are Sue Gilmore's and mine. Term of office is for three years. What would be considered as, for a candidate, the individual must be 18 years old, registered voter in the Highland Central School District, and able to read and write. They, they must, they must also have been a resident of the district continuously for one year prior to election, May 17. The completed petitions with the signatures of 25 qualified district voters must be filed with the clerk of the district no later than 5:00 PM on Monday, April 19. Candidates may submit an email declaring their intent to run and to request a packet. Only the original petition is accepted and must be received by 5:00 PM on April 19. No emails will be accepted. Any questions, you may contact district office or elseaniglia@highland-k12.org or via phone at 845-691-1020, extension 3137.
And one correction, that's April 18th, not the 19th at 5:00 PM.
April 18th.
The form says 18th.
Okay. So if we could, if we could correct that in the minutes also on that.
I got it.
Good.
I guess Lisa dropped it. Yeah, I think you have one too.
I see it.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. All right. BOC's annual meeting and board member administrative budget. Please note the following dates. Annual meeting is April 7th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. BOC's countywide vote, April 20th, 2022, which is a Wednesday. Nominations for board seat vacancies due March 21st, 2022, up until 4:00 PM. New Paul's three-year term, Rondell Valley three-year term, and an at-large position, three-year term. Do you want to speak to me that, Sue?
Yes. Yes. Mark, if you could just post that in the paper, that there is an at-large position open. It could be anyone in the county, but it's really, this is what I don't understand, Lisa. So if someone is interested in running for the BOC's board, I'm pretty sure our board puts, like, if somebody in our community, do, do you know the rules and regulations? Okay, yeah, good.
You, as the Highland District Board, would have to nominate them for one of these seats, but your next meeting is after the nomination deadline.
Oh.
Right.
Could we, oh.
You would have to nominate them tonight.
You would have to nominate, actually, like, because the deadline is March 12th.
First.
So unless you do
A special meeting.
A special meeting or whatever.
So if someone is interested, do they contact you?
No.
Well...
They...
For like, if someone in our community is interested?
They should contact the district.
I think they could.
You.
Because you, as the board, would have to nominate.
So then we would, we would then nominate the person.
Then I would pass that to
Okay.
Yes.
I, I would encourage folks from the Highland community to consider a run for the BOC's board. It, it's a meeting once a month and a committee assignment. The time effort is not as engaging as, as here, and
And they can contact the community, and then we can...
They would contact you to, yeah, but I would
Contact the board, so we can do it.
Yes, because I would really like to see some participation for, from our community for the at-large seat.
So as a board, are we all buying into the fact that we might have a special meeting at some point in time to accomplish this?
Have a candidate.
Yes, if we have a candidate.
If we have a candidate.
I think we can still resume.
Sue, do you know if David Thompson is running again?
I think so.
The person who currently holds the at-large seat?
He, he may be. Yes, he is, he is a current at-large person. Yes, he is. Yeah.
So as far as that special election, if you have to do that and people can't make it here, we can do that by Zoom. We just need to announce it in advance.
Oh, great.
And make the public known that that was going to happen. So
Okay.
That might make it easier for the whole board.
Yep.
Very worthwhile endeavor, so let's try to support it.
It is.
Okay. Bus purchase discussion. We had that discussion already, so
We agreed that we're putting it on in March.
We're good.
So next slide.
Old business. School Resource Officer discussion. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I think under this topic, I just wanted to say, I, you know, in understanding that the, our local police department has some funds available to it to try and restart a program, and I'm not sure how far that funding goes, but I think that if there's an opportunity, and if Dare is still a program that they're running, and our elementary administrators feel that there's a place, and it's worthwhile endeavor, you know, I, I support taking advantage of those funds and the opportunity to have a program like Dare at our elementary school, and perhaps it can grow from there. I would also, you know, if we were to do that and there was interest, clearly if there's no interest and there's no room in the program, I think that we can eventually move this off of the agenda. But if there is interest and that program has a place, for example, our elementary school, that that's something I would support. I think that we have several folks who spoke to Dare and the impact that that had on them, both as a program or just knowing a, a child who went through that and, and sharing that experience. So I also think that, I'm not sure what those funds are. I can't recall from when, when we had some information on that, but if there, if we were to do a full-year program out of that, what would the district, because my understanding is that no cost to the school district, you know, may or may not materialize. So if there, if we were to do a program, let's say two days a week at the elementary school, and that becomes a special program or whatever, what we would need to do to support that ongoing? So just sharing some thoughts around that.
And I can get you that, that dollar amount. I know it was in a Friday update back in January, so I just have to go back and I'll pull it and I'll, I'll include it in this week's.
Yeah, and I would, I would second the thoughts from Mr. Bucatzius as well. In addition to also some involvement, definitely at the elementary school, but looking at getting that, or resource officer also involved at the higher levels too, and, and how that works out and plays out, I think, you know, it's definitely up to administration, but certainly involvement at that upper level as well, I think it would be beneficial.
I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with an SRO program. I mean, like I said at the last meeting, we had asked Joel to get us some information regarding schools in our surrounding area. I got five school districts right in front of me that I pulled out from our last meeting, and I highlighted some of the objectives of what the, the role of the SRO is going to be. And, I mean, I'm going to use anteora. To assist district staff in training students in conflict resolution, restorative justice and crime awareness. To assist district staff in creation of a safe school environment that is free of harm, intimidation, bullying, and weapons. There's, and there's mission statements from Kingston City School District, Marlborough District. Ulster County BOC's also has a resource, School Resource Officer. I, I think it's a benefit to our student staff. I'm not just looking at it as far as a security piece. I'm looking at it, my, my three boys went through the district, and all three of them had an SRO program in place, and I, I think they benefited from it. Just to have that interaction with, with a police officer, I think we're getting away from that. I think if we can bring that back in and students feel comfortable talking to a, a police officer in that role, it's beneficial. I, I think, just overall, what they could afford to the district is, is complementing our, our existing staff as far as mental health, social work, our, our school psychologists. So it's just another layer of giving our students some more avenues to reach to, to help with everyday occurrences in their life. So I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward. I, hopefully Joel can resurrect the cost for
I have it right here, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the email to you right now.
And I think that can be negotiated with, with the town also, if we're really serious about moving in that direction. I would like to see it happen. I don't want to right, right away, kind of pigeon, pigeonhole that individual into a one school. I'd like to see, if possible, spread across all three, timing allowed, you know. Again, I see it as a positive, an opportunity for, to restore an individual within the buildings and help foster good feelings and better feelings about police officers, if anybody does have an issue or is fearful. So I, I see it as time to come back into that and restore that position, if the board agrees.
At this point, there's a lot of details that we still haven't received from the police department, including, you know, costs, if we were to move it in full-time, what types of support. So we had, you know, a conversation, but nothing has been specified. I, I do like Mike's idea about the Dare program, skipping what we've seen in the community with, with drugs and alcohol. So I feel that's a good, safe way. It's, it's a vetted program that's used throughout the country, so be interested to see if they're able to provide that support for elementary kids. And that's a good way to kind of build those relationships, because it's, you know, it's not anything punitive. But I'm, I'm in disagreement with restorative justice by the police department. There's plenty of programs in the country that train our staff on how to provide restorative justice. That's not what our police department does. So I just think, you know, we still need to explore this more, and I would love to have, you know, a community forum to discuss, you know, what the SRO program could be. But at this point, I'm just not comfortable with moving forward any further than something like a Dare program.
Again, I'll, I'll say what I said last month. We have three fine security personnel. I'm, I'm fortunate enough to be on the Diversity Committee, and I have heard such excellent feedback from, about those individuals and the job they do. I believe they are retired police officers, or, or maybe correctional officers. This, from what I understand, this has not, request has not been brought forth by administration, nor a teacher, nor staff. And we have done so much positive work with the Diversity and Equity Committee. They, as you know, have written to us, and they, they are not in favor, and I do feel very sensitive towards their feelings. And I, I just don't want to create a wedge in this community. We are doing so well. And the police, the police regularly visit our buildings, from what I understand, the state police, the sheriff, as well as the town. They come to our buildings on a regular basis, at least three to four days a week. Thank you.
I also forgot to mention that today, other than passing comments we've heard from people, we have received a, an email. from people, we have received a... an email in regards to the SRO program. We've received quite a few weeks ago, not necessarily in favor of the program, but we have received at least one today, at least one positive email. So again, thank you to everybody that are sending these emails, both pro and con. It does give us a good feel for what the public is thinking. Please keep weighing in, spread the word.
I think the other thing, she's not here this evening, but I think at the last meeting, our student board representative really spoke specifically to this issue, and I certainly heard what she had to say, and I think that that's pretty consistent with what Ms. Gilmore is saying coming out of the committee. So certainly sensitive to that, but I appreciate the comments that the student rep made and still think about that.
Do we, as a board, have any more comments on the SRO program? We have to, in order to make this effective next school year, we have to take some quick action in the next month or so, because it possibly could be an additional item in our budget, if we were to pursue it. So we have to plan for next year financially also.
I think those numbers coming to us will make that a more real discussion, I think.
Yes, yes, obviously. Heather, you have a question?
And I just, again, you know, I'm not in favor at this point, because we just don't have the information. So I think rushing to make this decision is just not in the best interest of our community. So we've heard from, you know, some individuals, you know, different sides of it, but with this, what's going on in this country, like, we have to be sensitive, and we're not... I mean, I don't believe we're being sensitive to everyone in our community, and we just... the group of us are making that decision. So I just think it needs to be a community decision, if we want to... if it's something the community wants to do, we need to have buy-in, and we're not going to have buy-in if people at the table are making that decision. And I just think we have to, you know, it's the climate that we're in, and we just, I think we're going to move in the wrong direction if we sit here and we vote and haven't reached out to the community. Like, I just, there's nothing to lose by having that conversation. So we want people to build connections with police, so we have to start somewhere. And I think having a conversation with the police department about what the program is going to do, which we still don't know, right, because we haven't talked about that yet, but it just really caution us in rushing to make that decision without that input and opportunity to interact.
Yeah, I think Camille makes excellent points. I think we need to... we need more information. I respect what Sue's saying regarding the diversity and equity committee. I have to... I sincerely feel though, and at this point, I agree very much with Camille, that we need to have more conversation about what exactly this entails, what's involved, and we have to have all the parties involved with a voice. But what concerns me is that we fear what we don't know, and that's the greatest thing. That's why we have the diversity and equity committee, is because we fear what we don't know, and we're trying to alleviate that. And when I see labels coming out that an SRO is the school-to-prison pipeline, that's not Highland, that's not Highland, New York, that's inner-city Chicago, maybe, but that's not... I see no evidence to that, I've seen no... unless somebody can show me, otherwise I'd be very happy to look at that. But in our environment, in our community, I don't believe that's the case, and I don't believe we, as a board, or we as a school district, would allow a memorandum of agreement in that officer to create that. So for me, and again, I tremendously respect the concerns put forth by the diversity committee and other parties, but I believe it's a fear of what they don't know. And I think the positive aspect of this is to bridge that, so that people who are afraid of the Town of Lloyd Police would have an opportunity to meet them, to experience them, to understand them. The Town of Lloyd Police would have an opportunity to meet the youth of our community, and it wouldn't be a sudden confrontation at probably the lowest moment of an individual's life, which tends to happen when people are encountering law enforcement. So I think there are very positive things that could come from it. I, again, respect tremendously the concerns about the very fragile communication that's going on now, and our efforts to heal what we may have been in some places ignorant of, and I think we should put that up front and respect that. But again, I think some of the voices are fearing what they don't know, and I think we have to try and listen to both sides and come up with the information that Camille speaks of, so that we can respectfully put it forth to everyone. That's my...
No, I understand Camille's concern, Ed, I understand that also. And it's probably somewhat unfortunate that the individuals that wrote those letters never experienced the SROs we had. And currently, our... one of our security personnel in this building was one of our initial SRO officers. So I think we got to look at that and say, this individual right now, and Sue, you even alluded to that, that they're doing an excellent job. Well, this one individual was an SRO for four or five years in this district, and I think the students benefited from that person. Again, it's getting the right person, and that is, I'm going to call it the crapshoot. We don't know if we're going to get the right person, but we have to afford the opportunity to go that direction. And I'm looking at these five school districts that put together roles of the SROs, objectives of the SRO program, duties of the SRO. If we're going to start moving in that direction, we have to start developing this. And I think the opportunity right now is that the Town of Lloyd Police Department has reached out to us and offered this, more or less as a trial basis, for no cost to the district. We can initiate it in September, and if we don't like it by the end of December, we terminate the program. We're not obligated at this point in time. We might get an individual that is going to be beneficial to the entire school district, but that might be that unforeseen, we don't know that at this point. And the student body might really, you know, gravitate towards this individual and find it to be beneficial. We have to afford that opportunity. Right now, it's afforded to us at no cost, and maybe at that point, we could start developing what we want and expect as roles and objectives, or put that in place now for this individual in September. I think it's an opportunity that's lost right now if we don't move forward. And if we're going to keep putting this on the agenda for discussion, I mean, we could be here for multiple meetings.
Yeah, and I think by, you know, getting some numbers to it, we move in our deliberations about it, and I think within the next meeting or two, we'll know whether it moves forward or moves off the agenda. So that, I mean, that's how I see it. But seeing some numbers, definitely don't... I think the concern, Al, is we've made so many positive gains in some of the area... other areas in managing the district and relationships, that if the building administration is not asking for something, why would we risk some of the gains made? I mean, I think that's how I'm conceptualizing it.
Understood. I mean, I sat here December 14th, 2012, or 2011, I believe it was, 10 years ago, and we were bombarded with community members asking us to put armed personnel into our district. We, at that point, said we were not, we were going to put security people, we did it within, I think, a week or two. We had security personnel in each one of our buildings. Are we going to wait for that next situation to say, what are we doing now? I think Heather alluded to that, being proactive or reactive.
One of the thoughts I have on that is, there appears to be a model that the school community is happy with and comfortable with. I think about our, you know, the one lone security officer and the type of emphasis we place on that position. I'm sure it's burdensome to those people, but if this doesn't materialize, this SRO discussion goes away, I am open to dialogue about increasing those unarmed security guards that we have in our schools now, and increasing that model, so there is an increased level of support. I mean, there's no doubt that every board of education is talking about how to increase measures of security for staff, students and safety of everyone.
Agreed, but we did increase our security to the afternoon programs, and we no longer have that. We no longer have that security for our afternoon programs, and that was something big that this board wanted to push for several years ago, and that's long gone. So I don't know what the board is really thinking as far as additional security for our buildings.
It's a thought to resurrect that, in addition to current staffing levels, whatever direction we head in there. But I... we really have to move on beyond this point tonight. I know, you know, we have capital project to talk about, and...
Mr. Miller, just to try to direct our conversations in this topic, rather than continuing to have it on the agenda, do you think it would be beneficial... I know some of what Mr. Mizell alluded to is some of the unknown, right? And I think, you know, just as Mr. Barone has shown, and we have seen really in some of our weekly updates, that we have different agreements. There's different agreements throughout the county that different school districts have, and I'm sure, you know, one that may be best for Highland is kind of a mix of different arrangements that are currently existing in other districts. Is it possible to start to look toward what a contract for Highland would look like, so that we can get some more solidification to it, so we understand what that means? So it might help some people understand what it will bring to the Highland community? So I think in order... in my mind, what I see a need for is to start looking at what a contract would look like. I don't know how that happens. Does... do we form a subcommittee? Does administration work on that? You know, I would be more than willing to help out, but I just don't know how that would happen.
I think a lot of those same districts might have the same attorney, so you'll see some... there's some variations in those contracts, but there's, you know, a level of template to it. I think if we get the numbers, we'll... and it... beyond the next, you know, let's see where the next meeting goes with this discussion, and if it survives into a meeting beyond that, maybe that's the time to look at contracts.
And I'll touch base with Town of Lloyd tomorrow to get... I'll ask them to just look at the number that they gave us before and make sure that that's an accurate number.
Yeah, because as our budget discussion went, we're going to be honing down, you know, with each of these meetings as those numbers get real.
Worst-case scenario, we really do have to put this to bed pretty quick here, so we can move on. Victoria, if we needed to, we could budget for that position if we so chose, and then if it doesn't happen, we can reallocate that money, move it somewhere else. What can we... what's our options?
I'm sure I could find a way to spend it.
I bet, okay. Again, I apologize for trying to move this along and push it along, but we really should start discussing the capital project. Okay?
I agree.
Agreed? Thank you.
Okay, so the document that's in front of you is the one that I sent to the board on Friday. It's just blown up in a larger format, so it's easier to read. So if you take a look, the first pages are the items that are included in the scope of work. Then, let's see, there's... you'll see that page one starts again, then there's a scope of work for the athletic fields, the track and the turf. We agreed at the last meeting that that would be the add-on to the base project. And then... did someone say something?
Yes, correct, you're right.
And then the information on the next pages, so the last set of three, that those items are the items that are not included in the scope. So if you look at the new scope of work on the first page four, we're at $14,344... no, I'm sorry, $14,344,978.92. Yes, I do wish, Sue. So how did we get to that? We went back through the February 8th document, and we identified items that we could pull forward from the scope not included document. We included the lockers at the high school, the food service renovations, the main offices here at the high school, the abatement in the boiler room, miscellaneous finishes was added back in for both floor materials and wall materials at the high school level. At the middle school level, it was the gym sound system that was added back in.
Should we go building by building? I don't know where it went to ask questions.
Whatever you'd like to do.
All right, so I'm on page one. The principal and assistant principal renovations.
Yes.
What is that? That total cost is just under...
$197,835.
Do those renovations increase the square footage of those spaces?
No. No.
So I think I'm asking myself why I would spend $200,000.
I think that was part of our walk-through.
That's fine. I mean, when we went through this that night, I noted the things that people were interested in putting back in. So when we met as an administrative team, we put the items back in, because the charge that we were charged with that evening was to bring us up to the 15.5. So the items that people put in got us up to 14.... sorry.
I believe, Mike, that this was the item brought up by Mr. Barone last time regarding the fact that the entryway, our principal and vice-principal of the high school have offices that are retro 1960 and haven't been touched since, so they look like they're out of Matman. I think that was why the numbers were put back in to show.
We're not, I mean, we're not tied to anything. We were just... I just took the information that folks mentioned at that meeting, and we started adding the things back in to get to 15.5, but we ended at 14.3, I think.
So I'll, you know, I'll just need some clarification as we move forward on how we're spending $100,000 in office.
Say that one more time?
So I'll just need, as we move forward, I'll just need some clarification on how we're spending $100,000 per office. There's two offices, we're just under 200,000. Maybe it's not an even split, but what... if we're not increasing the size, what are we doing to those spaces for that money?
Well, there's demolition, there's...
Because I could replace the track with that money.
It just seems pricey.
Don't we have a couple guys who can go in there, rip some paneling down?
Well, I believe there's abatement that needs to be done, so that's... it's all listed under the renovation. But we could do it another way, I just... that was the...
Just a comment, I'm sure there's other comments, we'll move forward.
Pete, that's gutting that facility?
Limitation there is that if there's abatement that has to be done, has to be tested for.
All right.
If there is abatement there that has to be done, then it's essentially handled until that's done. But we can't go in and rip paneling off.
Right, so, if we touch it, there's abatement that needs to be done, right?
Correct.
If we don't touch it, does abatement need to be done?
No, it remains... No, it remains 15.5.
And that's 40,000 for the abatement part of that. And 39?
$39,567. The fifth line.
But basically, if we touch that area, once we get done with the abatement-
That's the key.
Are we gutting?
To do anything with that area, it needs to be abated. That's really the key. Thank you.
Right. Has to be abated for us to do anything to it.
Right. But regardless, once we get past that point, is everything getting cleaned out, down to the walls, the floor, the ceiling? Are we rebuilding? We keeping the same design?
I'd love to know where exactly the asbestos is in those spaces. Is it in the glue that's holding the panel? Is there?
It's more than like-
Floor tile.
I think we're-
It's in the building. It's in the glue that holds the paneling on the walls.
I don't think we need to waste that. If you feel that it's not something that we need, I'm not disinclined to, I'm not going to disagree with you. I see it's a cosmetic issue. It, I don't know if it's necessarily affecting the education or the safety of anybody by leaving it as it is. I think that's the issue we should be talking about, not the nuts and bolts that were set up by the architects and the construction crew. If we don't feel the renovations are necessary, we should say that, you know.
The comment of it's one of the only spaces in the building that hasn't been renovated is important because it is our principal and assistant principal's office. I was just trying to understand what's driving those costs, but abatement is what's driving that cost. So that's an answer that I received this evening that I don't think I really had thought about prior to now, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
40,000 is abate.
Yeah, 80,000 is renovations.
It still, it seems pricey.
What's that? Because the way the paneling isn't small enough room, in those rooms. It is a full dump.
It's wall-to-wall, right?
The ceiling is against the paneling and everything, so ceilings, everything has to be lowered.
How much would it cost to put a lava lamp in there?
What's that?
I just asked how much a lava lamp would cost. We could just go with it, seize the retro.
Could I, I guess I just, I'm not understanding. I see there's four pages here with a project cost of 14.3, then it starts again.
That next one is the turf and track as its separate proposition.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And then the last pages, we stapled it together so that it was not three packets for you. The last three pages are the scope that is no, not included in any of the work on those first four pages. So the back, if you want to add anything more from the back and take something off, so let's say if you wanted to take off the principal and assistant principal renovations at 200,000, this is back at the high school, and if you want to put something back in, you could, you could do the locker rooms for 80,000, you could do the custodial relocation for 60,000. So it's like a, it's just a menu. You're removing from the, you're removing from the purple and you're adding from the yellow in the back.
Gotcha. Okay. My concern, my concern is this. We have, we've committed to a $3 million BOSI's financing. That's already given. I am, I am supporting the turf field, the proposition. My, my biggest concern right now, because the world seems to be on fire and everything is just so expensive because of this war, I don't want to take this project all the way up to the ceiling, only to have it defeated because it is so expensive right now for families, to even fill their gas tanks and to do grocery shopping. I'm just, I just don't want to see us fail by going to the max when we've already committed $3 million on the BOSI's. So I'd like to maybe negotiate something that keeps the turf field in, but keeps the capital project at a reasonable level, level that everything will pass.
But Sue, the turf field is not in or out. That's a separate proposal that we have a community to vote on.
I understand that, and that's why I want it, I'm prefacing it. I, I'm supporting the turf field proposal, but I'm concerned by putting the base project at the max because of the rising costs that everyone is facing, that the base project could potentially fail, thus dooming.
Of course it could fail, Sue, but it's at 15.5, it's cost-neutral.
No, it, this is not, we've committed to a new loan for $3 million. I know you keep saying it's tax-neutral. We are not in a tax-neutral situation right now because we've, we've committed a $3 million loan for BOSI's.
But our capital project at 15.5 would be cost-neutral. It's the BOSI's part that would be additional.
That's right, and that's why-
And that's what we voted in favor of.
That's why I want to temper this.
We had four speakers take the time to come out here tonight, come up to the microphone and tell us to go all-in.
If we tempered, how's it change the impact?
I would like to-
We're still going to bond the BOSI's project.
Right, right.
And if we go to the max on this capital project, there's no impact to the-
If we don't go to the max, that will ease the pressure that BOSI's will create.
Right now, we're at 14.3, which is not the max.
Right.
We were actually going to ask the board to take a look at those last few pages this evening to see if there was anything in yellow that they wanted to add in, because after we added the things back in that folks mentioned were their items last time, that's what got us to the 14.3. So, I mean, we can go back and we can take it back apart, but-
No, it's just-
I understand what you're saying, but-
I'm very, very concerned about the rising costs that everyone is facing, and it's real, it's serious. And I don't want to see this fail.
I don't want to sound negative here, Sue, but you supported a $40 million BOSI's project, correct?
Yes, I did.
Where you knew that the burden would be placed on all eight component school districts.
I did.
And now you're not supporting a 15.5 million dollar capital project that's going to have no impact on the taxpayers?
Right, I was never going to support, I said that months and months ago, that I would not support us-
I just can't follow that logic, Sue. When you support a $40 million BOSI's project that was going to impact the entire Ulster County community.
Right, right. I said to you months ago that when we had this capital project on the table, I said we should reduce our capital project so it is totally tax-neutral for the taxpayers.
Sue, before we-
I did say that.
Before we voted on the BOSI's project, we said, and I, I'm on, the record is saying this, I was concerned that it would reduce our capital project and the good of our own district, and you specifically said that wouldn't be the case. So if we're going to go back in time, then I'd like to rescind my vote for the BOSI's project so that we can go to the maximum here for our capital project.
Well, you can't do that.
Well, you can't bring up things that we've already settled, then.
It's, I have said this for months. I've said it for months, and so I can't, I can't support going to the max. I'm only one vote, it doesn't matter.
We voted on it. I don't understand it.
And we did vote on it, and I, you know, just, our kids need this, you know? We have a very relatively low number of kids that go to BOSI, that go to Ulster BOSI's. We pay all this money there, and then we're going to take away from our kids, like just, we can't do that to our kids. And we, as a board, we agreed, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't 100%, but we did agree, and I think we have to move forward because we're going to still be sitting here in October with nothing to put forward. So at this point, and I just think we, we agreed to it, let's move forward. But there's a lot of kids here that don't go to BOSI's that deserve, you know, stay top of the, you know, top-of-the-line facilities, you know? Here, athletic fields, and I think we got to give it to them.
Respect everyone's opinion. I'm just, I'm thinking of, of the taxpayers as a whole and the cost to an individual family.
So just to move the conversation forward, just looking at what administration was talking about, and I know it's certainly probably more than we want to spend or talk about, but one thing I wanted to bring up is, one of the things in yellow is the concession stand. So I know in the second, you know, proposal, we have the track, we have the field. I would be in favor of adding the concession stand, and I'm not sure where that fits best, but I do think, and I know Victoria has come in, I do think that, you know, when we look at that, that is, no, it's not a huge revenue source, but it is something that can balance some of that, and it is a big thing for a complex of that, the complex that we're looking to have, to not have a concession stand in facilities, I think we're, we would be jipping ourselves.
I agree with Heather. That's the one part in yellow that I think we need to add. I mean, being the person that spends a lot of time at the fields, you know, my days are numbered with that, unfortunately, but, you know, I spend a lot of time in the fall and the spring, a lot of families that spoke this evening, and I've said it before, we travel around, we see what everyone else has, and our kids don't have it. And it's just, we had a chance, a few years back, it didn't work, and I just think how we communicate this project to our community is what's going to make the difference. So if it means we can bring people on tours to see the facilities, I just feel like we have to, if this is what we want for our kids, we got to fight for it. Putting it on paper, I just think, I would like to see us be creative in how we get this out for both this, the budget, you know, the first proposition, you know, like I feel like we have to do, go out and, because as Sue's saying, this is a tough time for, you know, for us financially, you know, with what's going to happen with the war, what's already happened with pandemic, so I just think, you know, this is important to us. We have to maybe go the extra mile in that part of how we promote to our families.
Camille, would you be interested in putting that concession stand into the base project or into the addition with the turf and the track?
Can I just interject? I don't think it will fit in the base project.
I don't think it will either. That's why I was asking.
Right, it, it won't fit our ratios in the base project, and I've, I've heard a couple times now the, the idea that this is going to be a profit maker, but I will warn you that the staff costs to man it, I don't know that it is going to be a huge profit maker for the district. In my experience, I've seen booster clubs running concession stands.
And that is how it runs currently, and I wouldn't, I would like to see that continue.
So that, that isn't really a, a revenue source for the district?
Yeah, agreed, it's not a revenue source. I apologize, but I think it does just gain something for the community, whether it's booster clubs, which are ultimately given back to our children as well.
Absolutely.
Appreciate the clarification, yes.
But it won't fit into the base project.
Right.
So, so right now, option one is shaping up to be 14.3, right? That's what I'm seeing?
As it stands tonight, but as, when, when we were bringing this back this evening, we were bringing it back to have you as a board, take a look at the yellow items on those last three pages to identify any other key projects that the board feels they want to add to get to 15.5. We did not get to 15.5. We only added the things in that folks mentioned they were interested in at the last meeting. So that's where there's about a million two. But there's also, there's also a line of thought that if we can stay under the 15.5, it just builds in extra in case there are overages. So I think we still go out with 15.5 is what the thinking was.
Right.
I don't want to change our whole conversation here, but have we researched yet those outdoor pavilions, the learning pavilions? I mean, I don't see any cost associated here, and we've been asking this question for the last four weeks, and we haven't got an answer yet.
We didn't send that?
I gave you a fraction of that local set now.
I think there were, I thought I mentioned it at the last meeting, there were like $200,000.
I, I thought we were going to get a rendering or something, I mean, it's out there.
Yeah.
We did. Is the metal in there?
I don't know if I have that. Sorry.
When? I got it somewhere in the hallway.
Probably should have forwarded it to the support service also, because I mean, we've been, Al, I'll, I'll, I'll stop speaking now.
Go forward to me.
We did not see- Take, take charge, please. Let's go. Come on.
Okay, we didn't see that design out. Well, you're looking for it.
So this evening, I heard some folks from the public speak that the fields at the elementary and middle schools are used quite a bit also and support not just our own academic program, but community programs as well. And I think there's some areas there. I'm on page two of those, the last three pages where items are in yellow. And there's some athletic field work identified there. So one's an update to the scoreboard, and there's some other pieces, and our athletic director wants to speak to that, absolutely.
Sorry, Mike, what page were you on?
Two. I'm on the second page from the last-
Got it.
Frank, you want to talk?
Page, yeah, page two. I know, and there's also the elementary, but in the middle school, a couple questions I have. Fencing, under fencing, athletic field, fencing entire east side of athletic field. You're talking about, you're not talking about between, I'm sorry, town field?
I think it's, I think it's woodside place.
That's the woodside.
That's woodside side. So the south side of the property, there's nothing to be done on that side. It's fenced by the basketball court, that's not addressed either?
Not in this, but that's not, that's not going to be addressed, but yes.
It's going to be addressed, but not in this.
Right.
Okay. And then I see that the gymnasium sound system is back in for the middle school, and I know the lighting is in there.
Correct.
All right. You may want to also take a look at that ceiling there too, which is aged with color, and it might be an aesthetic thing where you might want to go in there and maybe do a spray coat or something there because it's, it's not very appealing. Then in the elementary school, the athletic field, the softball field, and I know I mentioned this at a meeting before, I know something needs to be done there, but I just don't know if it's $118,000 worth of work.
Well, I'll tell you what, because I know those fields are used and they would be a benefit, and certainly they're an eyesore on our campus currently. I am supportive of moving forward and repairing that field and bringing it up to standard so long as we maintain it moving forward.
The issue with the elementary school field because of the teams that are playing on it now is the outfield has to be filled in more, bring it up to a point where it's level enough also to, if somebody's running for a wall, because you got older kids playing on it than you did before, so that they're running for a wall, they're not going to run off the edge of the field.
Right, so there's some grading that-
There's some grading going on, the whole thing there that has, that has to be done. I'd suggest, who was, you can tell me to stop, but we were looking at the 15.5 with 14.3, and then going, if we're going to go back into, that was to give us a cushion because historically we come out with projects that we've run out of money for when we go out to date.
Because of that lag time.
We're, yes, especially in this environment, we're looking at a cushion here where we got 14.3 in a 15.5, and then what I, my process is to take some things like those and put them in as alternates that we move forward with, that we're not guaranteeing to anybody that they're going to get done. But if we have money under the 15.5 or similar like projects of what we have already done, then we can go up to the 15.5. then we can go up to the 15.5 limit. But we're not telling somebody that we're gonna give them X, Y, Z, and then we're gonna get asked, why didn't that happen? Because we ran out of money. And that's what we've typically done in the past a lot of times. So that's why we kinda like put a little bit light on 15.5, so we have that area to.
I, I like that line of thinking because the way that costs are increasing now, certainly by the time this project, let's assume gets approved, you go out to bid, there is gonna be scope creep with just what's in there already. So I, I, thank you. I agree with that.
You're working on stuff that you can go back to and you can add in, or we can put things in and add that as an alternate that are gonna go into the bids, and then we drop it there over 15.5.
All right. We're, we're going in two different directions here. We started because there was some question about the principal's office, and we were talking about moving other items in place of, what else could we do maybe in place of that? And then we went directed towards, look, it's at 14.35 or whatever that number is. What can we add to bring it back up to 15.5? What, what direction are we going in? Are we supplanting items here or are we with something else, or are we just adding to that bottom number?
I mean, I was responding to the superintendent's request that there's still a, a margin level there. We hear Mr. Miller's concern about, don't fill up that home margin because there's scope creep and that might allow us some flexibility.
Very sound reasoning.
So looking at those last few pages of yellow items, I'm supportive of improvements to the athletic fields at both of those campuses, meaning middle school and elementary school.
But what's the utilization of those athletics, athletic fields at the, at the middle school and the elementary school outside of our own programs?
The Baybrook use the elementary school field consistently.
Frank, do they, does the Baybrook program use the village field or Tony Williams?
Baseball field does. Also lacrosse uses town field as well as Tony Williams.
Well, let's say for the baseball or softball season, who utilizes the village field?
Lacrosse, which is the same season.
All right. So no, no baseball or softball utilizes that field?
No, we try to fit them into Tony Williams, and if need be, they would go to the town field for baseball.
Do the youth programs, I mean, I know I heard their enrollment's about 200, 250. Do they need all that, that field space? I mean, were you improving fields that, to benefit those programs? Is that what we're looking to do?
I'm approving field work to benefit our school programs and community programs.
What improvement has to be done at the middle school field? No, to Peter or you or?
The main field?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's minimal site work there.
The main, the main soccer, lacrosse football field.
So we're only talking about the softball field?
The softball field, the elementary school.
Right.
Which has always been.
Does our modified program use that softball field?
They will be, yes, if we have.
And I think what Mr. Miller is reminding us is don't just look at the, the infield portion when we talk about field and where this money's going, the outfield, and there, there needs to be some site work there to bring that field up to standard. Cause if it's a softball field, I'm gonna wanna ask, can our school team play there? That's the standard. Whether we play there or not, you want the ability to have games there.
Right. But at what cost?
At the cost listed there.
Pete, on that page two, the middle school athletic field scoreboard, could there be a, something incorrect there that signage is 118,701 and site work is 118,701? It's like the same number.
So we could, you know, make sure that that number's checked out.
I can check that out. Oh, I have to go back and look at that.
But I would support a new, do we, do we have a sign there that works now?
No.
Yeah.
Right.
There's nothing there. And right now, we don't, we don't utilize that field for varsity that much anymore because we just don't have, you know, we don't have a JV program like we used to. So we, we get as much of a varsity games up here for lacrosse and soccer on the main field here. And with improvements to the baseball field here, we're able to play some varsity games up here. So we really don't play that many varsity games down there anymore.
Do modified games get played there?
Modified lacrosse, modified soccer are played down there. Our four modified football games, we moved them up here because of parking and it was much easier to get one field ready than to.
But school contests are played there regardless of the number or quantity. I don't wanna disqualify those kids and coaches and everything that goes into, into those games as well. So, you know, we could talk about the costs, but if there's an ability to improve those areas for a nominal cost and it fits into the schema that we're talking about, I support it.
Victoria, is there aid on this, on what they're talking about?
We do still have space in the allowance at the other schools, much more than at the high school. Yes, there, there is enough.
There is, okay.
I mean, once we've fully defined the scope, we'll wanna send it back to Bernie Donigan's office to have them reanalyze it.
I would support additional. I would support additional security cameras. It's another item that's in yellow. Whenever you're investing in facilities, you also wanna monitor them. So that's an easy one. Some low hanging fruit there. Okay. Safety and security. Thank you.
Peter, those outdoor educational pavilions, just a rough estimate. If you, we haven't seen the documents, but what were we looking at in terms of numbers?
They're 200,000 feet roughly.
And these are metal construction, wood construction?
They're metal construction, metal roof, 24 by 34, I believe was the size of that.
Electric?
Electric, data. Part of that cost is the county sidewalks and access to.
Okay.
Because they can't just be sitting in the grass. They have to be accessible.
And cycle locations we have identified?
We have done.
Okay.
Just going through the list, I like the renovation to the basketball court at the middle school as well. We know that's an area that needs to be addressed and students use that both during school and recess and absolutely after school on weekends. It is a community resource.
What's gonna be our comfort level moving up to? Are we gonna try to get close to 15.5 or we're gonna try to leave a cushion? Does anybody wanna weigh in on that?
I like leaving the cushion, just given the uncertainty that we're in right now. So I just think, leave, rather leave a cushion and then if we have the extra, you know, money to maybe come back and do some other things.
I agree. I think leaving a cushion with some things as alternates so that if we do have the extra funding, we can utilize it.
Okay. So I guess we identify alternates, see how we put it, you know, make up to those numbers.
Yeah, because I, I have an idea of what option one is gonna be. I don't really have an idea of what option two is gonna be, which so many folks today spoke so eloquently about, which is the turf option. Do we know what the cost of option two would be?
That's in the, that's in the pack as well.
I don't see it. Right. So what's that number?
3.096. That's without the concession stand.
What was that, Heather? I'm sorry.
3.096, and that's without the concession stand.
So 3 million, 3 million.
Concession stand is 1.3.
Concession stand might be marginally less because we reduced the size of the bleachers.
That's what I was gonna ask.
What I heard earlier, oh, go ahead. What I heard earlier from the community that spoke was that the need was for the turf field, increase in the track and athletics overall. So, I mean, if that proposition would include the concession stand, I think that would be a positive there. The voters make the choice if they wanna go forward with that. I mean, if we're gonna sell a turf field and, and a track, I think that can be sized down somewhat. 1.3 million for that is, is kinda steep.
And that's based on the, the seating and the bleachers?
Thousand capacity, correct. I mean, if, if the feeling is to have the support service, go back with CS Arch and, and kinda look at these numbers again and, and see, you know, everybody's gotta realize that there's a 29% contingency built into all these numbers. All right. We don't know what the bidding climate's gonna be a year and a half from now, but that's a hefty contingency built into all this.
I did say, oh, I'm sorry, Mike. The, what I did enjoy hearing several of the speakers mention was referring to it as a sports complex. And I thought that was a very attractive statement. And by including the concession, like you're saying, and building it as a package, I think it becomes something, you know, to say the Highland Central School District is, wants to build a community sports complex. And I think that's a, I think that's an exciting thing when it's packaged that way. So.
And I think selling it with the, the increased facilities, so bathrooms out there, I think that's probably more important to people than, yes, concession. But you say the word concession and to me, that's like a luxury. But bathrooms are not a luxury. Having bathrooms out there so that folks are not walking a quarter of a mile to get to a bathroom.
It's a long walk for our home field.
You know, so I mean, maybe we use a different word than concession. Yes, that will be part of it, but it's more than just that.
Outdoor learning facility.
You're saying that, but I was thinking.
So Heather, right now, option two sits at around 3 million. You're saying you put in that concession, that you would support it at 4.3?
I think having the support services committee go back and relook at those numbers, cause I think it probably, like Mr. Baron said, 1.3 is pretty steep. So maybe looking at what that, what that works out to be. But I do think it, you know.
I'd have to see that work, cause I don't know if I support that, cause I feel like it's another million dollars.
Yeah, it's a lot.
It puts the field at risk.
But when you take away, and I think to everybody else's point, it's a very good point. It's not just concession. When you take away those facilities, is it really the complex that we want it to be, that we envision it?
Well, ideally, the concession stand, as we've seen in larger places, would have restrooms, washrooms, would also have your, your health, people would be there, whether it be nursing staff or something, they would, they would all be located in that same structure. So it would be, you know, an amenities station, really.
I know when I go to games.
It makes a lot of sense. I'm not.
I know when I have games and I have very young children, when they say, I have to go to the bathroom, it's like, all right, now I just missed 20 minutes of the whole game that I just came to watch because I have to trug with a three-year-old to the facilities and then all the way back. So.
Well, right. Well said and very real. Gotcha.
No, what I'm looking, what I'm looking at, just did a little quick math. I mean, you're looking at a 1,500 square foot concession stand. That's, I believe that's what they have designated there. At a million dollars, at $666 a square foot, that's quite high for, for costs, including mechanical. So if we had to run a sewer line or whatever it may be, it's, it's steep. We have it at 1.4 million, so you're talking about almost a hundred, a thousand dollars a square foot. Kinda steep. For the location it is. It's on a flat area. Of course, it needs the water sewer and electric brought to it, but that's not that expensive.
So is that something that support services can look into to see if that's, I mean, I agree, it is, it does seem steep.
Yeah. In my speaking with parents, one thing they did bring up was a concession stand.
Well, I guess we as support services have to look into that. Well, I mean, the consensus now is to put that into that proposition. Let's do it. I'm, you know, we all. I meant as far as the number.
I think we could put it in and, and have them relook at those numbers, especially in light of the fact that we changed the bleachers and maybe there's some cost savings there to.
I mean, we, we could put any number in there and have to bill to it.
Correct.
I mean, we're not, we're not married to those numbers, guys.
I think, I think those numbers came, those were the track and the field and the concession stand and things like that, came from real numbers that CS Arch dealt with, with, I think it was Qualling, because that was the last project.
Yes.
So those numbers were guided by that. And do we need 1,500 feet or do we need 1,000 feet? Or what do we need? I think that's, that's open for discussion to say, it's gonna cost you this because of that.
As much value engineering that can go into that portion, I think would be prudent.
But we have the opportunity to control those costs because do you want bathrooms with full ceramic tile? Or do you want bathrooms with block walls, epoxy painted block walls that are clean? You can, you can adjust those costs, but that's something that we could do and the support service can, can work with that. I mean, there's, I mean, you, you take another facility and say, well, we built a, a press box for, you know, $700,000. Yeah, they might have luxury seating in it, glass, sliding glass, the whole nine yards, but we can adjust those costs.
Yeah. And when it goes out to bid, that's, you know, those are the things we'll be dealing with.
We don't have to have the state of the art restroom facility or, or concession stand. You know what I'm saying?
Well, the board's also gonna wanna know what it lost, right? What would it have looked like if, if it was at full cost? So let, yeah, let's see, let's see how it goes.
I think we could put a pay toilet there for $20. Heather would pay, it sounds like.
In other words, I wouldn't want, so 1,500 square feet for a concession stand is a decent amount of space. I wouldn't wanna end up with a closet because of value engineering and two people could fit in there and they're shoulder to shoulder. You know what I mean? It's, so it's still something we wanna be proud of. I think we, we.
And again, at the high school, that could be used as an outdoor classroom as we see fit during the week. Why not?
What, the concession stand?
Yeah, why not? If it's there, why not use it? Why let it sit?
So are we in agreement in adding that concession stand into that proposition, but determining what the right fit is in terms of?
I would support that. I think so. That's, we want community input. I think that was strongly what the community was saying, yeah.
Are we including that, Tom? Wow. I hope it doesn't sink it, that number on top of what we already have for the field and. But we heard from the. No, I understand that. I understand.
And that's what we'll rely on, community members to help.
I'm, I'm okay. And I also preface that they have to go out and, and sell the project. So.
You guys are up to this, right?
Athletic complex, the community has to support it. And, and that vocal group's gotta go out there and sell it.
Right. It's up to us.
I'm okay with it, Al.
Yeah. And I think, quite honestly, I think the sooner that we have all of our pieces in line, the faster we're gonna get our documents and we're gonna be able to start promoting it. So I do think we're gonna need the time. We can't, we've talked about this before. I don't think we can wait till the summer to finalize all of this. We need to get to that spot.
No, I was gonna say, we're gonna need drawings over the summer to allow you.
Say we start now.
To communicate to the, the taxpayers what they'd be getting.
Camille's point, she had asked if we could get Ulster Bosse's to do any preliminary work to have some signage out there for like lacrosse games. I don't, I mean, we could put something out there, but a rendering is going to be much more appealing than just.
Definitely.
You know?
I'll go one step further. We can utilize Bosse's services and create a 3D rendering that they, people could. We can utilize Bosse's services and create a 3D rendering that people could have a walkthrough on the site, on our district site before the vote, to get an idea of what it would look like, what it would be like. We have Bosse's to help us out.
What? Go ahead, Pete.
The reality of it is, is that, and Joel and I had the conversation today, is that we need to be, we need to get it locked down, so we can start to develop what the actual designs are, so that when we get blue, it doesn't come back as red, because the last project, we went out to bid on it before we had drawings. And we don't want to be an exit, especially if we're looking at.
Making adjustments.
Whatever. We want to make sure we're getting what we can get for what we're doing.
Are we all, I mean, is everyone comfortable with building in a cushion? I've heard that Camille and Heather were comfortable with not getting to the fifteen point five, so that we were, yes, going there, but there would be a cushion there.
I support that as well.
I was too.
I support that, but I definitely want to see the educational pavilions.
So you're okay with fifteen point five?
Uh, no.
So then you don't need the cushion?
Yeah.
You don't want to be on my list.
I'm not comfortable going to the fifteen five.
Okay.
If we're really going to look at the outdoor pavilions, we're going to have to go to the fifteen five. So I'm in favor of going that route, if we're looking at those pavilions.
What outdoor pavilions?
Eddie, true.
I'm making breaks.
All right. Pavilions, that we talked about, Valley Central.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Roughly two hundred.
What I'm hearing is the board has provided plenty of feedback.
Yeah.
For the committee.
Yep.
To go back and hammer this into a final proposal. That's what I heard.
No. The committee's hammering this into?
Yes.
Yes.
Wait, wait, wait. No, wait, wait, wait. I just take it two steps back.
Support Services is going to get together, and they're going to put their final stamp on this.
Right, but including the things that we've been talking about. Have we already, have we established exactly what we want to be added, like you said, as alternates?
I have what people's ideas are, whether that gets us to fifteen.
Right, I think, I rely on the.
I just want to make sure we have the list of alternates, and that we don't come back and go through this whole thing again.
Well, I mean, I think we might still.
I make no guarantees.
I appreciate the honesty there.
I don't, without, without adding all these up right now, I don't know what that comes up to.
Right, right, right.
So, yes.
They were actually putting alternate in, that it's going to drive over fifteen five, but it might not be an alternate that we're going to choose.
Correct.
In the end result.
And as you mentioned, Mr. Miller, once the drawings come to light, and we have specificity as to exactly what we want, the numbers are going to become a little more precise as well.
Right, I'm only saying, because we provided some examples of what we'd like to see in there, that more than fill the gap that exists.
Right.
You also heard, I heard three board members, there's probably a few more, who would like to see some level of cushion in that number, if feasible, and.
I heard all of you do.
All right.
So what happens at the end, if you had, if you had five hundred thousand dollars worth of alternates, and your bidding came back, and they only be able to choose a hundred thousand dollars of the alternate, then you're going to make the decision of what the alternate is going to be.
And we've done that before, yeah.
Right.
So Joel, can you just review what the charge of the Support Service Committee is going to be?
Yes.
I echo that's rendering.
What we're going to do is, we're going to meet, and we're going to determine.
Number one, we're going to meet, okay.
It's getting late, Joel, isn't it?
Get a little punchy there, Joel.
Before I forget.
I've been up since 5:00 AM.
We got it.
So we're going to meet as a Support Services team.
We've got ten minutes, and we'll wrap this up.
In person.
In person.
We're going to meet, and we're going to go over the items that people noted that they would like to have us consider as alternates. We'll come up with that list and determine whether they can all fit, or do we have to make some decisions?
Right, and I know Mike's concerns were the upgrades to the assistant, principal and assistant principals want to do the upgrades to the athletic fields at the, both the elementary school and the middle school, the basketball court. All right. So, I mean, we have to, we're going to look at all that and kind of bring that all back.
But we also need to look at the numbers of the concession stand.
Right.
And for time's sake, once the Support Services comes back with this information, can we just, you know, we're agreeing with the concession stand. I think it'll be fall before we actually get to what this sports complex will look like. If we keep on, they come back with a proposal, and we pick it apart again. So I just think they're putting their time in as a committee, and we got to respect that and trust that they've done the due diligence when they present something to us. So I just hope that we can, next meeting when we get that, we can move forward with it, so we can start getting word out to our community about what it's going to look like.
Thank you.
Well said.
No, sorry. Just to be.
That's okay, I just said, well said.
I didn't know it was coming from over here, it thought it was over there. Go ahead.
No. I just said, well said, Camille. I agree with that. I think we need to charge the Support Services Committee with that, and when it comes back, I mean, trust that that's moving forward.
Just to be clear, are we removing the principal and assistant principal renovations out of the project and replacing it with other things? I heard that was where the conversation started, and then I don't know if that's where we landed.
I'll leave it to Support Services. As I understand, no matter what we would need to do in that space, it would have to be abated.
Right.
I leave it to you. I mean, that'll have to be abated.
Okay.
At some point, whether that's this project or the next one. I understand the cost driver and what has prohibited us from addressing those spaces.
Go ahead.
Go where?
No, I'm just saying, we're talking about what we're.
No, I'm good.
He's good?
Okay, all right. I also suggest that we bring, we allow the athletic director to come into that Support Service meeting, because I think his input's going to be valuable as far as the athletic piece of it, you know, talking about the concession stand. I mean, I'm sure he's visited a lot of other districts and seen what they have. Maybe that could be valuable to what we can redesign that, and kind of bring the cost down a little bit, and add that to that proposition. And also, you know, with the bleachers and the athletic fields down at the middle school and the elementary school.
While everyone's here, can we get a consensus on when a good time is for everyone to meet? For the Support Services? So that we're not doing the email thing?
Fifteenth of March?
Ides of March?
Yeah, I was going to say, Caesar won't be there.
Well, we can meet on the seventeenth if Ed brings the beer.
What was that?
And we're going to meet at Al's house.
Why we meet at?
What's your availability?
Not the seventeenth.
Fifteenth?
Seventeenth is St. Patrick's Day, no way.
Fifteenth, when?
You just said fifteen.
Seventeenth, I won't even be here.
We'll be here until midnight.
All right, so if maybe Support Services could just, before Support Services leaves, I don't want to hold everybody else up. If the five or six of us can get together and nail out a time before people leave tonight, that would be great. So that we're not holding everybody else up.
And I'll publicly apologize for my outbursts before.
No apology necessary. You should have had those, and I apologize that you didn't have them. I knew the dollar amount, but I, and I just checked my email, I don't see it there, but that doesn't mean it wasn't ever there.
Okay. Miscellaneous correspondence. We received a letter pro, pro SRO, I'm going to say. The board did. Let's see, where else? Anybody else receive any correspondence that we should know about? No, good, okay. Annual Highland Educational Foundation. The annual event will take place on April 23rd, 2022. This year, the purpose of the fundraiser will be to raise funds for equipment and programs that promote education and focus on the whole child, physically, socially, emotionally, and academically. For those interested in sponsoring a table, please contact Superintendent Joel Frey.
And I'll just say that many community members have already reached out, so thank you for those that are already interested in sponsoring a table. And just a point of clarification, the monies from this are going to teacher grants for the purposes of the whole child, physically, socially, emotionally, and academically. So this is so teachers can have some creativity in things that they would like to do in their spaces.
Okay. Any questions on that? No? All right. This kind of covers what we just talked about in correspondence, emails from community members. So we just went over that. That's that. We are now at the point of public comments. General items. Don't necessarily have to be agenda items.
Janine, I just want to say, it would be helpful if there is a decision, so that we are able to go to the public and say, hey, this is what we're going to do. So renderings or drawings are things that we're able to provide to the public, so that we can say, hey, support us, this is what we're trying to do. It is a community athletic, I forgot what it was.
Complex, you actually said it. Sports complex, yeah.
Sports complex, yeah. So if we have something like that, we need to get support, and we need to find all different ways, whether it's outdoor, you know, it's used for a multi-function, and that's what we need to do. So we need you guys to make a decision, so that we then can get some drawings, we can get some renderings, and we can then do what you all told us we have to do, is go out and find support. So that's it.
Thank you, well said. It's nice to hear from community members.
Kenny Newton spoke earlier. I've been, you know, coaching Little League and softball for a couple years, I have my kids. Before I did that, I was kind of new to the community. But, you know, people didn't know anybody, didn't know how to sign the coach, but sent an email and said, hey, if you want to coach, if you need help, I'll manage. You know, and of course, I'll get you to be the manager. And I've got most of my closest friends to do those connections. I'm coaching baseball, because there's a void in the volunteer shift, you know? I don't really know anything about basketball, but I watch the league, I read books, I learn, you know, lean on my friends who do know more, but teaching the same principles to kids of hard work, dedication, believing yourself, all that stuff. It drives me, when I'm a baseball player, to, you know, do your best and leave it all in the field, right? I've recently made lots of connections with people that I didn't know. You know, facilities, Dwight McMillan and Frank Alfonso, I've reached out to at the worst possible time to ask for kids in an outside organization to come in the gym and get prepared for baseball season. I mean, I was going to ask in November and December, and that's the middle of Omicron. So I waited, and I sat there, knowing that I was signing up kids, sending a letter to the school, every kid in the elementary school, knowing that they might not have sport, or kids to play with, or anything like that, so. And it was kind of on hold, because we were an outside organization, but every single one in my program coached at the elementary school. Every coach was a parent. And it all feeds the athletics, obviously, over time. But, I mean, I don't just drive baseball and softball, you know? I drive kids to play football, soccer, and the ball. And, you know, it means a lot to them, just to be able to compete, be with their friends and stuff like that, you know? I don't want to see them on their paths when I'm not. And it's not a goal for them to, like, just, you know, be a professional, but they've become better people through good mentoring, and, you know, those people that are in the zone, so, like, they really believe it. And especially, you know, if they haven't gone to bathrooms, like, I put that in my speech, it's a huge part of it. You know, people don't want to go to a sporting event if there's not a bathroom, especially, you know, senior or somebody with disability. I mean, it's got, the proposal's got concrete sidewalks all around the track and everything. I mean, that, that's huge, where a mom who's got an infant and her, you know, her son is playing soccer, where she controls him, right? Comfortable. And, you know, you can't put a number on that, so. I want to thank board and the chair for the opportunity to speak, and I'll leave it at that. I'll extend my earlier comments.
I love your passion.
Thank you, Coach. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Heather and. Heather and Camille.
Yeah, you're good.
Yeah, yeah. Mike hits Sue.
Good question.
I thought about it before.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I get frustrated with time, I don't know why, but I do.
Yeah. Board, don't forget Sue Gilmore's money.
Are we still rolling now, or did they turn it off when they left?
Being next to me for that period of time, I just, I don't know.
Congratulations.
Yes, that's me.
We'll see you soon.